Hey, Abby. Sorry it took me a minute to get the camera and the all pieces go.
No problem.
How are you? How are the kids? I mean, how are your kids doing? Are they like physically attending school or?
Not yet, but we got the notice yesterday that they're going back full time in on April 8th. So.
Very exciting.
It's very exciting. It's unbelievable at this point. You don't know what that even looks like. You can't imagine it. So.
It's like a full year, right? A little over a full year from when it closed.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, it's been interesting times to say the least. Yeah. So. By the way, my husband is stuck at work, so I may have to leave early again to put them to bed. So sorry about that. As I said, interesting time. So.
You know.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Well, you know, hopefully we'll all be out of this one day soon. It's hard to know whether exactly what.
Hello, David.
How are you?
Someday you'll go back to work too. I mean, like, I don't mean work. I don't mean you'll work. I mean, you'll go back.
I started going. I've gone twice a week.
Well, you're in a very small office, right? So it's.
Yeah, it's about 20. Yeah, it's not bad.
Are you taking the train or are you driving at this point?
I took the train for the first time in one year. Very nice. There's nobody on it. It was very comfortable.
I took it about three weeks ago. I had to visit some of my brother in the hospital and it was wasn't as empty as people told me it would be, but it was still pretty good.
Yeah. No, I was empty, but it was a it was a different experience. Grand Central was empty. Very funny.
That is true.
Yeah. Very strange, but I remember the last day I was in the office because I remember putting stuff in a suitcase last March. And I remember standing at the door, looking back, saying, I wonder if I'm coming back here again.
Wow, really?
You know what? It was a long time I wasn't. Being remote is very difficult in terms of where things are. And I mean, even today, like I was in this weekend. That becomes like you either duplicate things or I don't know. I have a difficult time with it.
I think people who are who grew up.
Give me one moment to live stream.
Oh, look, we have Rob Stout on the on the call with us today.
And if I start my video, they'll know it's not Charlie.
We are recording.
Okay, so have we opened it to the public yet? We need to do that, don't we?
I'm sorry. I'm not sure I understand.
So it's live, it says. Now it's we're now live.
We are now live streaming. Yes.
Okay. All right. So welcome. Good evening. Welcome to the March 4th meeting of the Village of Mamaronek Zoning Board of Appeals. The first, if you Amber will explain what you should do if you wish to speak for we don't for the public hearings. Amber, do you want to tell the whoever's listening?
Yes. So if you are an applicant, when your application is called, please click the raise hand feature so that you can be promoted to a panelist. And then during the course of the review, the chair will ask if there are any attendees who wish to give comment on the application. If you wish to do so, please raise your hand and you will be promoted to speak in first come, first serve order.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So the first item on the agenda for a public hearing is case one SP 2021 1043 West Boston Post Road for an interpretation and a special permit. Is the applicant here?
Yes, so I'm promoting everyone to panelist.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
This is Nick Marsh. I am the CEO of Chop Creative Salad Company. I'll be taking the lead tonight. And thank you for the opportunity to come back and discuss our special permit request one more time. We are so we we are we are amending our special use permit application and we are seeking approval to operate a restaurant with car service. And I do want to just mention to the board as I get into this, I have spent, we as a team has spent a tremendous amount of time, spent a number of hours out of respect to this process to make sure that we personally that I personally understand the specific components of the code that we are going to be asked to operate against. And as a result of that, I'm going to try to do two things on the call today. I'm going to try to limit my comments to the code as written as tightly and specifically as possible. And I'm going to try to eliminate as much subjectivity in my comments as possible so that we can really try to just make the case about whether or not we are conforming to the to the code. So here goes. Chop, I'm going to start with Chop America is clearly a food service establishment as defined in section 3423B. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that. We certainly understand that as a food service establishment that gives us certain rights and also certain services we must avoid. And when we now go one more, one layer down from that as a food service establishment chop seeks approval to operate a restaurant. And again, we have requirements in operating a restaurant that we have to that we have to fulfill. And I do want to point out that and focus on the fact that in response to the comments in the last meeting, we are we are making specific modifications to the operation to our operation in order to ensure that we fit the definition of restaurant. And I want to I'm going to go through. I'm going to go through the specific points of the definition of a restaurant to communicate to the board that we will fulfill those criteria. But I do just want to jump ahead on on one of those, which is a point that I think Meg voiced last time, which is the key is the table service. Right? And although there are a number of criteria for being a restaurant, the reasonable version sniff test includes. Are you bringing me my food to my table? And so very importantly, as a result of that, at Chop Mamaronek, customers can order at a table. And we will bring the food and serve the those customers at that table. And we will do that specifically to ensure that we satisfy the table service criteria and qualify as a restaurant. But to make sure that I'm thorough, starting at the top, right, there are there are four positive criteria to be defined as a restaurant. Number one, a business engaged in the preparation and sale of food and beverage. Affirmative, we will do that very specifically emphasis on preparation after a customer orders, we make the food. It's not made ahead of time. 90% customization of our menus, no grab and go case. Number two, selected by patrons seated at a table or counter. Affirmative, we will do that. We will execute that via QR codes on the table. We're showing you a quick picture of this. You point your phone at it. You very quickly on your phone will be brought up our menu. And you might even get a picture of that. Right? For dine in, you will tell people you you will you will identify what table you were at, and then we will next slide bring you your food. Okay. So there are there are to continue on. The fourth bullet point is, I'm sorry, two is selected by patrons seated at a table. Third, third is served by a waiter or waitress affirmative. And then fourth consumed on premises affirmative to that food will be served into stables made of sustainable bamboo to be consumed on premises. So in just quickly walking through the specific definition of what we need to do, we satisfy all of the positive criteria of the restaurant definition. But we understand we're not quite there yet. Okay, because there are also negative criteria, right? Meaning things you can't be if you want to be that restaurant, right? And the term, the code goes on to state that the term restaurant does not include a business whose principal operation is is a bar cabaret, carryout restaurant, delegate test, and a fast food. Okay, and I'm not going to go through every one of those because I think some of those, some of them are self evident. But I do want to make a couple of points just because they've come up in previous meetings and I think I think that I want to address concerns that we've we've heard before, right? So specifically, carryout restaurants, which are 342, section 3423B87. We are not that. The definition of that speaks to, and I'm not going to read the whole definition. We haven't, if you would like to go through it, but I'm going to objectively try to pull out what I think are the most important parts. The retail sale of food or beverages, which may include grocery items. It talks about ready to consume food and beverages from a counter type installation. And it talks about an area devoted to customer seating is clearly accessory to the main business. So we are not any of those three things. No grocery, no ready to consume from a, you know, grabbing go counter and an hour, hour. Our dining room is a 900 square foot dining room with custom leather and wood banquettes, 36 seats inside 18 seasonal, at which we will be providing table service. So we feel comfortable. We are clearly not that. I would bring up fast food restaurant also. Look at the definition of that 3423B88. And that that definition, it's funny, talks a lot about what you're not allowed to be to be that, but it focuses on prepackaged containers or wrappers ready for consumption. And I do think there's a reasonable person understanding of a fast food definition in society, what that is, right? And you go in, they've made the food, you can get it, you order it, you get what they what they what they tell you is on the menu. That is not us. We very specifically, everything is made fresh to order. It is not prepared for before you get there. It is 90% customizable. That is not something that happens in fast food restaurants. And again, we are we are now going to bring the food to the tables for customers. So in conclusion, under the major group of food service establishment, given our core business and the inclusion of bringing, you know, ordering and bringing the food to the tables and the other and the other above points regarding the other classes of food service establishment. We believe we are eligible for classification as a restaurant. Okay. So the fun part's still coming. We move on to part two, right? As a restaurant, Chop Mamaronek seeks approval to provide car service, right? And as per the code definition of restaurant, car service shall be permitted by special use permit only. So so we I'm going to follow the same approach to talk about car service and review the details of that definition. All right, and see how we comply to that. Our method of operating car service falls within the parameters of the village code. Village code definition of car service, section 3423B12. Criteria number one, service from a restaurant. Hopefully we've moved, we were agreed on that. Criteria number two, provided to customers remaining in their vehicles. Okay. We're going to do that affirmative. And then bullet point three, parked in a designated parking area of the restaurant parking lot. Affirmative. If you have a specific designated area of the restaurant parking lot for car service on the northeast side of the building, under the existing canopy and signage as which we are happy to, you know, augment however the board would like, but we'll designate this as the car service area. All right. So once again, and maybe Justin dropped the presentation for a second so I can just like this, so I can see everybody. I lose getting to see everybody when I when I when we go up. But so once again, I think as it relates to the positive criteria in the code, we're very sure that we can meet those criteria. Right? We will do those three things. But and once again, beyond that, we're not done yet. It's required that we don't violate any of the negative criteria while we are executing our car service. Meaning we can't do anything that violates any section of the code. Right? And so here's where here's where it gets interesting. Okay. What about the window? Can we use the window? Or if we use the window, are we now violating code specifically by constituting outdoor counter service, right? That's that's the question. Now, if we if we go back to the different areas of the code that we read through, interestingly enough, in the definition, the definition of restaurant is silent as to outdoor counter service, right? Doesn't say if you're a restaurant, doesn't say anything about, but what we what we understand, and Dave made the point last time totally correctly, right? But even though we're a restaurant, we are still a food service establishment. Right? And we still need to conform to that code. So if you go back to the food service established definite food service establishment definition, it clearly states outdoor counter service is prohibited. Right? And we understand, Dave, I just want to make sure, you know, we urge you, right? It doesn't say, even if we're in agreement, I'm a restaurant and we're in agreement that I have car service, I'm still a food service establishment. I still can't have outdoor counter service, right? We totally understand that. And so the question is, is if we if we're if we're if we are following all of the positive criteria and we're adhering to those as a restaurant and car service, if we hand the food through a window, have we now inadvertently provided outdoor counter service and violated the code? Right? That's the that's what I see is the question. And so what I would like, I would like to make the case tonight that we do not. Right? We would like to, we would like, I would like to make the case that we that we do not violate outdoor counter service by that part of handing through the window. And just quickly before I jump in, I appreciate your indulging me one more time and trying to make this case. Okay, because we I know we've spent a bunch of time on this and I know that this is a a very, very important issue to town. I understand that. So thank you. And here here goes. Right? So are we violating outdoor counter service? We said, let's go back and let's follow the same approach that we just did as we were able to evaluate restaurant and we were able to about car service. Let's go back and go point by point through the specific definition. Okay. But there there is none. No definition exists in the village code that we could find. Hopefully no one will correct me. But we were unable to find a definition of outdoor counter service. So now we're in, we are in gray area, right? There's some level of interpretation. How are we going to go about this interpretation? All right. What we thought would be most logical would be to do two things, right? Look at a couple of, I mean, when we've been in these conversations, looking at a couple of businesses that you have all informed to me, either red, a foul, or were in and around outdoor counter service, right? And then number two, and I think most importantly, right? Break down and itemize the list of services that they offer, right, to sort of demonstrate that we're not doing that. All right. And 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 one thing I also want to, I want, I think is a very important point. Because we really went, tried to go deep on this, and I know this is a place we've gone round and around on our previous calls. We're not allowed to provide outdoor counter service, right? That's what it says under food service establishment. I think the word service is important. Because what it does, it doesn't say outdoor counter, right? And that's different because if it says outdoor counter, that's when we all got into the conversation. Is it a window? Is it a counter? How thick does the window have to be before it becomes a counter? That's that's I we agree that's not the point, right? Counter, a window could be a counter, but are we providing outdoor counter service? All right. And so.
Are you including drive in or curb service as well?
Excuse me?
Are you including when you refer to outdoor counter, are you including drive in or curb service as well?
No, sir. I'm speaking specifically to outdoor counter service component of the code. So if you look at and Justin, maybe you want to bring up this table now, right? If you look at what's going on at two, two concepts that are in Mamaronek, Ralphs and Walters. Right? Here, here's what they do. Skip to maybe the table, Justin. Thanks. Right? There are there are six components of what goes on in this place. There are outdoor, there are outdoor menu boards for customers to view. Customers place order on premises. Customers wait for the order to be prepared. Customers pay for their order on premises. And there is some facility of condiments and napkins and straws is accessible to the customer. And then ultimately, yes, the customer receives their their order. Okay, but what we what we what we present to the board is that when you look at at the operation. But what we, what we, what we present to the board is that when you look at, at the operation in totality, we think it's hard to come to the conclusion that handing the food through the window constitutes outdoor service, outdoor counter service. We don't think it's a reasonable interpretation that just by, by performing one of six services that you were thereby in violation of the code. And we don't think, and, and again, we agreed to the concept that Meg put forward on table service that, hey, there was, there was, there was one criteria that rose above the others. You had to have that, right? We don't think that exists in a negative way in this section of the code that there's, oh, but if, if there's any one section of these things, you've now, you've now violated the code in totality. Okay. And so in, in, you know, in conclusion, we would, we would, we would, we would suggest or request, or we would suggest as a reasonable interpretation of the code that we are, that we could be allowed to hand the food through the window, satisfy the criteria of our car service and not by virtue of doing so violate the restriction against outdoor counter service as listed in food service establishment. Thank you, everybody. Justin, you can put that down for letting me go all the way through that. I appreciate it. And I'm, I'm, I'm happy to hear your responses or take any questions.
I want to thank you. I think that was a very good, I appreciate the presentation and the effort you have made to try and respond to our concerns. My, my first question or my, at the moment, my only question really is, is simple. If you are a restaurant, have you determined whether you have sufficient parking spaces to satisfy the requirements of the code for parking?
Yes. We have.
Now you have, I don't believe you submitted anything more, anything new to us, correct? Like we didn't, you didn't submit a plan with parking spaces and a plan with the area set aside for car service. I know you discussed it last time, but I don't, did you submit anything? I don't recall. That was why I didn't think I saw it, but.
Justin, can you come off mute and respond to that?
Yes, we've got, we submitted an amended site plan. I can, I can share on the screen if you'd like, that shows our proposed plan with parking and our designated car service area.
I don't think we saw that. Did, did we, did I, did I just miss it? Somebody?
I did see the amended one.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm not sure we got it.
Yeah, this is Ander Spad, counsel for the applicant. On February 11th, I did submit a cover letter with the documents provided by CHOP, which included what Justin's making reference to. So that was sent and circulated hopefully.
Is, is this, is this some site plan any different than what was originally attached to the traffic?
I believe the only difference would be the car, what Justin will point out is the car service component.
Correct. We've responded to the board in our previous conversations and included a car, a dedicated car service area in the parking lot, which is shown on this plan.
And so there is, I see a car service area. How many cars can fit in that car service area? It doesn't seem apparent from the site.
So we have provided an area here to designate the difference between, between car service and exiting the building. We are, we're providing one space for a single car to pull up in the car service area.
Um, how many park? So you didn't take that out of parking? You still have the requisite number of parking spaces, correct?
Correct.
I don't, you can't tell from this though.
What are the number of spaces?
We have 15 spaces. Include, in addition, we have four dedicated employee spaces.
And what you're seeing could pass?
I'm sorry, six, six employee spaces.
You said you have 36 seats. This just says 32 seats. So
There's one more space then, I guess.
So I think you might need another space just.
So the requires, so the required for 36 seats, so there's one seat required for one parking space for every three seats that would require 12 spaces. We've actually gone above and beyond and provided 15 in our part, our parking lot. We also have six spaces dedicated for employees.
So the 15 include is just for the, okay.
Correct. Yes.
It does not include the car service space.
No, because that space is dedicated for car service only. So we've gone above and beyond required for the dining room and the car service.
What, what about the outdoor patio?
So the outdoor patio, as I understand, is, is, is a seasonal outdoor patio. The seats will only be available while the weather is, is not inclement. And so don't believe it's required to include those parking spaces per calculation.
There's actually no requirement. What we are given is in the zoning code are minimum requirements, which is and this, the number for staff. On another prior application, we did add, we did make the requirement, we added more spaces required for outdoor seating for a restaurant that was having patio seasonal seating on site. So that is something up for the zoning board to decide whether or not additional spaces are required. As I'm, the guidelines are for minimum parking, we take into consideration the fact, if you're going to have extensive seasonal seating.
Understood. Thank you. And we have a few extra spaces here as well, above and beyond the required interior seats. So we've got at least availability for parking for nine outdoor seats if you use the same calculation. So.
Um, I do saw in your traffic study that you also are going to have a space for Uber Eats. Is that correct? That was in your traffic study.
So in the, in the traffic study, we alluded to a space, really a pull-off space in the front of, above and beyond the car service. Say, so say, for example, a customer drives in and their order is just being completed, is not ready yet. We provided a space for, for someone to pull over.
And that's in the front, even though you have to get in line to go around to the car service, you're going to sit in the front? Or I guess you'll come out to them in the front, even though they're in.
Yes, then there's, there's a door on this side of the building on the, on the front side, we can walk in and provide that.
And when I saw, I'm sorry if I'm interrupting Dave, you were, are you, did you have more questions?
No, wait, that's okay.
No, go ahead, Dave, if you had questions.
Oh. I'm just having some, I understand your approach on 342, 45. Where you indicate it's not really a outdoor counter or for service or drive-in or curb service. And I guess my reaction to that is, I mean, so one can always attack and argue about the language. I'm not sure what then would be prohibited? Because if I take your result, how does someone say, you can't, it's forbidden? Cause it talks about you can't have an outdoor counter, right? Or drive-in service. Isn't that effectively what this is? I mean, I understand you're splitting hairs in the words and I'm, I'm not being cute about that. I understand you. It's, it's well said. But if I take that approach and analysis, then I would say, well, tell me what actually would be prohibited by that section of the code?
Well, I, 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 I do think, and I, and I think, again, I think that the, 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 the word service, I think is important. When you looked at the picture and we, we put it up for a bit, but you, you all have more experiences than we do where there are, you know, 30, 40 people arriving on foot and standing in front of outdoor menus and they are, they are performing the entirety of a food ordering experience, the entire experience while standing and being served through, through a window or a counter, right? I, I think that when you look at that whole experience, that would be, but I, I, I don't think you can say that just a window constitutes that. Right? You couldn't say, if, 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 if I went to the section on restaurants and I said, well, you know, I'm, I'm, I am satisfying one of your criteria for being a restaurant. You wouldn't allow, you wouldn't say, oh, well, okay, then you satisfied one, so therefore you get to be that, right? You would say, no, you have to, we have to look at the, we have to look at the entirety of your operation and, and decide if that is that criteria.
But just to, maybe it's my thinking, but it's not one of the conditions that you have to meet. It's not a condition. It's a prohibition.
Correct.
All right. And the prohibition is against providing any outdoor counter or outdoor drive-in or curb service.
So do you, do you agree that we are not providing, that because we are, do you agree that we are not providing outdoor counter?
I don't know. I, I, it's a good point, but I still think it's an outdoor, the whole concept of this is I read it and maybe I'll, obviously I'll think about this is you can't have like an outdoor opening service because it says drive-in or curb service.
Okay. So, but so.
Isn't that really what you're having? You, you're splitting this.
I, I don't, I don't think I'm splitting hairs. I mean, there's no definition of outdoor. There is no definition. So what would be the most logical way for us to come to some objective understanding of what it is? Well, let's, let's come up with, let's come up with a definition. And that definition wouldn't be anytime you hand, I don't, I don't think, if you, look, if you tell me and the way the board sees it is the way Meg described table service. Hand the food through a window. Don't talk to me about anything else. Done. It's outdoor counter service. That if that's the, if that is the board's interpretation, then, then, then I agree. Then I would agree with you, Dave. But if, if, if the board would, would, I think it, or the approach that we took was, okay, let's try to provide the board a reasonable definition. Since it does, it doesn't exist. And we actually even looked at businesses that do exist and, and, right? And said, okay, well, what's going, what's going on here? And, 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 and we're not, we're not close.
So you're viewing this as a pickup section? Is that right?
There, we, we, I mean, we are, this is a place, yes, this is a place where you can pick up your food. And in order to confirm, in, in order to conform to the car service definition, which does exist, we have to hand you the food. You have to be in a designated parking space. And there's one more.
And remain inside your vehicle.
And you have to remain inside your vehicle. Thank you very much.
But how about the fact, the code says you can't have the outdoor counter, drive-in or curb service. Isn't this a drive-in service?
So I, I think that's, that's.
Not a drive-in service?
So I, I, so that's, I think that is a fair question. I think it is a little bit more easy to maybe address than the, than the, than the counter component of it. But the village code does, right? It does include drive-up car service. Which you're referring to, right?
It does not, it prohibits drive-up.
It, yes, it prohibits drive-up car service. Correct. Right? And it specifically says no drive-up car service shall be.
Drive-in or curb service, right?
And in the definition of restaurant, it says a restaurant is prohibited
Correct.
of car service.
So there's two different places where it's prohibited and it uses slightly different language. But it was our interpretation that it was getting at the same thing. We didn't think that there was supposed to be a difference between drive-in and drive-up. They were just used, those words were used differently in different sections of the code. All right. And so, but interestingly, again, we are allowed car service. Right? But we're not allowed drive-up car service. So our approach on that one was to say that therefore, since I'm allowed car service, but I'm not allowed drive-up car service, that the distinction must be in the drive-up part. Right? So the term drive-up must differentiate the types of service. So, so therefore what is drive-up car service?
I think it says drive-up car service. It says no drive-up or car service. So we're not talking about something called drive-up car service versus other kinds of car service. Two separate things, something called drive-up and something called car service.
If you look at the restaurant, Robin, if you look at the definition of restaurant, I believe it says drive-up car service altogether.
It says drive-up or car service, but I'm looking at it. You're telling me it says the code that I have is different from the code that you have.
Pull it all up, pull it up. We can all see it. Restaurant prohibits no drive-up car service.
It's two separate, in my view, it's two separate sentences. The first sentence says no drive-up car service shall be permitted. Period. Car service shall be permitted by special use permit only.
Right. Something, something called no drive-up car service.
Shall be permitted. Yes.
Correct. Correct. So then, so, so, so you are correct. We are not allowed to perform drive-up car service. Right? We do, we do agree to that. We are not allowed to provide drive-up car service. Separate issue now from counter, except that the two are embedded in the code in the same sentence under food service establishment. So it makes it a little bit tricky, but I can address that. This is a good question. Okay. What's, we, again, we said, all right, let's go back and let's try, let's go bullet point by bullet point to see if I can answer Dave's question. As a reasonable person, am I providing drive-up car service? Once again, there is no definition, right? For drive-up persons. No definition. So we took the same approach that we took, that I just walked you guys through on, on counter service. It was like, okay, what's drive-up car service? And I, I, we, we, we took, we, 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 we said, all right, that, that's when someone is able to kind of like in a fast food type situation, is able to go pull up, go through in their car and get their food. Right? And so
Or pick up their food.
And, well, I think there are multiple components, right? There's no, there's no definition. So Dave, there's no definition of, of drive-up car service. So when you say, or pick up the food, that's not per code. That's per you, that's per one potential interpretation of drive-up car service.
Pursuant to English language, yes. I'll agree with that. I mean, I think, I think one of the issues that I just pointed out is, I don't know. You know, interpretations are obviously important, but there has to be an inherent ambiguity. There can't be. We don't have a book of definitions that would be five million pages wide for what the word the means, what everything means.
Dave, I'm trying to do what I said I would do at the beginning of the meeting, which is
Go right ahead.
Adhere to what I read in the code as best I can. So what we would put forth to the board and, and Justin, you can put this up is what is drive-up car service? Cause there is not a definition. And so yes, Dave, I understand you can say that means you pick up your food, but I don't think that's the definition as per the village code. And to be, and to be fair, this is not the definition to, to, to the, this is the village code either. This is, this is an applicant trying to, trying to work with the fact that there is no definition. So I think a reasonable person's experience, when, whenever you've ever been anywhere and you've done drive-up car service, when you've gone to a drive-through restaurant. Right? He, here's the point, here's the most important point that I want to make as a point of distinction. Customers arrive at unpredictable intervals. Right? Anybody who wants to pull off the Boston Post Road and go to McDonald's can pull off whenever they want and just pull off and they get in line. Right? There's no control over that. There's the possibility that 30 people could show up at one time. And it's first come, first served. Right? After that, after they get in line, they order their food. They then wait for their order to be prepared. They then pay for their orders and then they receive their orders. We are, we are, we are doing something that has not really been done before insofar as people ordering digitally, and then we are telling them when they can come park in our car service parking space, parking area. And we will then give them their food. So it's different.
So it would be compatible with your having a sign outside when you enter that said, in all bold letters, no drive-up car service. You don't think people would?
You cannot, in, under no circumstances can you come driving down the Boston Post Road, decide that you're hungry and pull in and pull up to that window and get served. Can't do it.
Because you order in advance.
You order in advance, you pay in advance, and then I send you a text, what time you should come and be there.
I guess the difference that you have to, I don't understand is I'm not certain how the methodology of how you pay, how you order, how you eat, whether you use chopsticks or a fork, has to do with no drive-up service. No, nished, meaning that's the way I see it. And right now, anyway, I'll look at everything, but it does, it does seem to me, no. And I think you're saying, ah, because we don't take an order there, because we don't this, because we don't that. You know?
Yeah, and.
What a way to have a code. I mean, we'd be splintering it into the subjective analysis of everybody. What if somebody goes to a restaurant because they're tired and they want a glass of water, but they don't really order anything, or they have a cup of coffee instead? Or they accompany somebody. It's not a restaurant. I mean, for them, I mean, it's, it's, I understand that it can be done that way. I guess my difficulty is it says, oh, such service. It doesn't mean no such service unless you order in advance. No such service unless you prepay. No such service unless. I don't know.
Honestly, David, Justin, you can drop the thing and you can go back to looking at each other. I, I, I don't, I'm not going to try to convince you. I think that we as applicants were forced to try to present a reasonable definition of what drive-up car services, of what outdoor counter services. These things are not defined by the village code. They're not defined. And so, you know, we, we think that what we presented is a reasonable interpretation is a, you know. You know, you could probably find a few people who would agree with you. I can probably find a few people who agree with me. But I don't think that you can tell, I, 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 I'm, I'm not sure that you can tell me with, with assurity. That what I'm looking to do, which I, I can, I can certainly convince you, I think I could convince you of this. I could convince you that the experience. Of buying food at Chats. And getting your food in the way I'm describing is a different, that's a different experience. From, hey, my kids are hungry. I'm going to pull into line at McDonald's. I think I could convince you, and I think it'd be fair to convince you that those are two different experiences. Now, if, if, if you, if the board wants to conclude that, hey, that sure, Nick, you're right, they're two different experiences and guess what? They're both drive up car service and they're both void. Right? That.
Or we could, or we could go your way and explain to the other people why we don't go. I understand. Have you ever petitioned the trustees for changes of code?
Well, I mean, I'll tell you, Dave, I, I think that.
Have you ever petitioned?
No, I have not. I, we have not, we have not. I do think that it will either we or someone in. I, 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 I do think that there are, there are. Uh, I, I do think that that's a reasonable, um, thing to ask, but no, we have not done that. But, um, sorry, Robin, Chairwoman.
No, that's okay. I was just gonna say, does anyone else on the board have questions for?
I do. Um, thank you very much for thinking through the issues at hand and, and stating them so clearly. There are things that I have been thinking about as well. And I know that I was the one who pointed out that you need to serve at the table to be a restaurant. But that doesn't mean that because you've changed your model, I automatically am convinced now that you are a restaurant. So if I think about, not this use case, but if I think about a case where it's. Ninety-five percent takeout and somebody puts a couple of tables. And then those people, for those couple of tables, that little bit of business that they have, somebody comes and serves the food to them. Then now we're going to call them a restaurant. I think the proportionality or what is your principal operation is important. We, we totally understand that we keep, uh, we have applicants coming to us that do not fit. Neatly into the definitions that the code provides. And so we have gone to the hybrid, the general food establishment. In order to approve special permits. Um, but you are asking to be a restaurant. And as I understand it, the last time we spoke. Uh, I believe it was you that indicated that sixty percent of the business would be takeout. Which is a majority would be takeout, forty percent, you know, the, it would be a minority that sits down. But I don't mean to quibble, so I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but it's, it's not the majority of your business. You've also indicated that you didn't, if you weren't able to have this. Uh, service of being able to supply people food outside in their cars in some manner. Um, it wouldn't work. You don't plan to open. So again, that makes it sound to me like your principal operation model is not about. What we consider a sit down restaurant, which is people. Both getting their food and then waiting and sitting and eating there. It's that you are a different model than that for me. So I'm not convinced that you are a restaurant. I'm ready to discuss this with my board members, but I'm. Not there that I'm convinced that it is a restaurant. And then when you get to, just as to follow through what you were discussing with Dave. If this isn't drive up car service, I don't know what drive up car service would be. I know that the car service definition says an area. I also know that your original traffic study showed the spaces for eight cars to line up. As though I would assume you were anticipating eight cars could line up. Um, at least at a minimum. And when I look at the number of cars you expect within an hour and your peak hours like seventy-two. That's a lot of cars. I don't think they're all going to fit in that space that you, the one, that's why I asked how many are there? You have one space designated for the car service. Whereas I saw a parking study that showed you are trying to convince us this would work. That you have enough room to house. Eight people waiting to pick their food from with our cars. So that gives me pause. When I go back to look at the definition of car service. And I actually, and I should send this around, I got the minutes from when this, um, part of the code was enacted. And it was just one easy sentence. It said that it had to be by special permit. In order to be ensure that there is enough parking. I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm, I'm, you'll have to take my word for it, but it was not more than that. It had to do with enough parking, sufficient parking, and that's why it wasn't an automatic for a restaurant. That's why it had to be by special.
Car service, the car service special permit part. Is that what you're saying?
That that would be the element. That was why they decided it had to be by special permit only. So that the zoning board could, could determine if there was sufficient parking. So it doesn't mean you get, you get away because you had one space. You can say, well, that's the car service space that you've checked the box. We are supposed to make sure that what you anticipate to be the use of your car service. Has enough parking for it. So that turns me, so it, it feels a little bit like both in terms of trying to define yourself as a restaurant. Um, I appreciate the fact that you have, and I am convinced that you will have this new business model. But you're switching it around to kind of come under the gun and be a restaurant, even though you weren't started out thinking. Our, what our code describes as a traditional restaurant. Here you want to have car service, so you have one space for car service, even though you've told us how many cars and yet you. Goes through by thirty seconds or a minute and a half. I'm not quite sure there's time in there. It's really brief and really fast. And that you showed us a depiction of about eight cars waiting to get there. So to my mind, that's drive up car service because I don't think from what you, how you described your business model. That it's one car. And then seven minutes later, you know, that all happens and it's gone, another cars and there's a space. I believe it would be a lineup of cars that would not have designated spaces. While they're waiting to be served. So that's why I feel like they're all, the engines are running. You're trying to do this under a minute. Um, they're coming through, they have no place to ever eat the food afterwards. It's not like car service and they didn't want to go inside and get it served. And they can spend a few minutes going through it. Nope, this is just pick up and go. So for all those elements, I see it definitely as a drive up car service. I'm really concerned that there is not enough parking for the business model that you're considering. And I just another point that, that's going into a different direction. When I looked at your site plan and how they're drawn, the spaces are undersized per code. It's actually, you would need a variance and it could very likely be the zoning board would give you a variance, but they're only eighteen feet in length. When the, when the, it's described in the code as being nineteen feet. I understand eight and a half is, the width is sufficient for employee parking. But the nineteen feet are supposed to be for every space, whether regardless whether it's employee or any of the others. And it seems the majority of the spaces that. I saw on the other site plan, I didn't get to see this new one, um, were eighteen feet, not nineteen feet. Um, so that, that, that I think you would need to review. You'd really have those, uh, parking spaces wedged in pretty tight. Um, there's a lot of cars there. So I'm expressing to you my concerns of how I see this. That seventy-two cars an hour for two hours in a row during the weekday is a number of cars.
Can, can I, I want to respond to each of those points, but can I ask you one question? Because the one thing you brought up, I'm unfamiliar with, right? Which was. You said that when, when, in, in the use of car service. Um, you know, you're going to move in and out of our space, that there's clearly no, no plan to eat, that you're not able to eat in your car. Is it, is, is it, and this is a, this is a question that will inform my answer to you, but. I'm not aware that it is a requirement of your par, car service parking area that customers are expected to eat in their car in that area.
But what I'm saying is that it's definitely drive up, get your food and leave is all that's possible to do.
Okay, but the eating in your car is not a requirement.
Is not a requirement, but what I'm saying is not any.
So let me answer that one first.
Wait, wait, before you go, answer, because I think to clarify something Meg asked, sorry, just while, while you're clarifying what Meg asked, can you just? Make it clear, because I was, I thought something different and based on what Meg said, so then you can answer that. The car service place is not the window. The window is someplace different or is the cars, right? So there are two separate things. You have the window somewhere and you have a car service which is different, correct?
We, we, where we haven't, as we haven't drawn on the diagram now, the car, the car service parking area. Is outside of the window. It is, it is larger than, it is larger than just the window area, but we. We are showing it, we are showing the one area outside the window in deference to the, the, the fact that we had to have the conversation about.
Parking space, it is a parking area.
Parking area.
Is large enough for a car to go pass through the window. Pass by the window, whether, regardless of how you're going to get the food out.
That, I don't want to, I don't want to split hairs too much on some of this stuff. But so, in, in, I'm not going to respond to the size of the parking spaces because I don't know the answer to that one and I think we can, but duly noted. Um, but as it relates to the, the, the car service. And enough spaces, you know, we looked at the, um, uh, somebody else who is a restaurant with car service parking area. And it is, I think Frank and Finelli's, am I getting that right?
Frank and Fanucci's.
Frank and Fanucci, sorry. Um, which has two, which has two, it has a designated parking area, but they are very clearly two parking spaces. Right? And they each have a sign in front of them that says car service parking area or something like that. Right? And so, I mean, look, you, you're, you're right. I think either for them or for us, we could get more people arriving for car service. At one time than there are parking spaces. Now we could, you know, we have the capability at, right, in that space to, you know, you could. You, you could designate that whole area as parking area, right? There's enough room for three cars there. But what I would put forth is the most important distinction is. We can, we get to tell people when to come. Right? Yes, we hope it will be rapid, but we're sending you a text and telling you when to come. So. Absolutely, if you go to Frank and Fanucci's and somebody's in the two car service. Parking area, you got to park somewhere else and wait. And the same thing would be true for us if, 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 if more people showed up. But we at least have the advantage that we have some ability to queue when those people come.
I, I would like to say, I'm not quite sure that they actually got a special permit. I know they're operating with that. And the other distinction is that they're in the C two, so there is a. Really rarely, rather large parking lot, so there's a lot more space to run off and if there's a problem then.
Understand.
From parking area, so it's not, so I wouldn't, I would not say it's not fair, you know, Frankie Fanucci. Got this situation, the situation is, is different than yours, so.
I'm not saying it's, it's not fair.
I absolutely understand that you have figured out a way to mitigate a lot of the problems that come. I, I, like, hey, yeah, I think you can all understand it's not the same experience and I think you've described it very well and it's, 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 uh. You know, it seemed like a good idea, but we as a board. Can't say because you've had all these mitigating factors for drive up car service. It still tells us you can't have it. So until you present like an idea like this to the trustees. And they say, if you, your drive up car service has these elements to it, it will be allowed. It's not for us to say this more modern version of car service or drive up car service.
My, my, my only, my only challenge to that is that car, you, you don't have a definition of it. Right? So there's a, there's got to be a little bit of a room for someone to say, hey, look. If, if, if what I'm doing is really pretty different from what everybody else has been doing for car service, then maybe it's not car service. Sorry, drive up service. I said the wrong thing.
I, I think that, I think what the board would have to decide is first.
Absolutely.
Really consider you a restaurant and eligible for car service.
I leave it to the.
Is there enough parking?
Right.
To mitigate any problems with your, the way you've designed it.
We actually have other questions we have to answer. I'm not so sure, because I'm not sure I agree. I think we have a prece, some preceding questions. I think, so if you, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, uh, Nick. So if you want to go ahead, please go ahead. Um, so I think you have to figure this out.
I, I did just want to address Meg's point about the table service, right? Like, like, again. I, I, I understand your point, right? This is, this is a change to what we are doing and what we have done before. We're, we're businesses, we've been in business for twenty years. We've had, we've had three sort of major changes to our operations over time, right? First, we started out as restaurants in New York City, only selling lunch to people. Standing online. If anybody's ever visited our restaurants in New York, they have nothing to do with anything I'm talking about today. If you went to my restaurants in New York. You would veto every single thing that I'm asking about, right? But it's, it's a different customer and it's a different business. In, 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 uh, about eight years ago now, we opened our first restaurants in the suburbs. Right? And when we opened the suburbs, we had, we had to make, we had to make some pretty significant changes that changed how our. Um, that, that changed the type of, the type of service and even the type of food that we provided. We had to get into warm food. We had to elevate dinner. Dinner became, our, our business moved from being lunch hour to spread throughout the whole course of the day. We went from having what you would refer to as incidental seats in our restaurants. To having full dining rooms with thirty, forty, in some of our restaurants in North Carolina, sixty or seventy seats. Because everybody, everyone comes, it's a one hundred percent to stay business in those markets. And more recently, right, we've had to, we, we've had to, we, we've had to really expand what we can do digitally. To allow us to, to serve the customer in different ways, right? So. Uh, so when you say, well, you said it was sixty percent or you know, you, this, you, you're absolutely right. Like, we've had a business that has evolved over time. And I would, I cannot guarantee this, but I would really expect. That our numbers and percentages will change as we've added this elevated level of service. Which actually we're trying to take is like, take the silver lining. It's an elevated level of service versus what you can get a lot of the places. You can come to your table and you could sit down. Because one of our big, one of our biggest operational challenges. Which we haven't really solved in the suburbs is mom or dad with two kids. Right? Going through a line and trying to carry three salads, two bags of chips and three fountain drinks to table is a bad experience for people. So we're kind of actually, even though this has come about in a, you know, a. In quite a way, like, we're pretty excited about the idea of like, oh, this is, this is actually something we think is going to be very, very popular for people. And we think this is going to work. We're not, we're not, we're not taking the approach like. Uh, you know, we get, we got it, we got to just get by the board with this. Like, we, we think this is could be. Another element of our service. And one of the things that has helped us survive for all these years is continuing to meet customers how they want to be, want, how they want to be served. So I, I would, I would disagree that it's like, we're just trying to sneak in table service. That's not what we're doing.
Nick, if I can interject a second, Meg, you, you do raise some very good points and as Nick may reference to, as the company evolves. This is an evolution. It started off at point A or ended up at point Z. One wonderful tool. That the ZBA has. With regards to the concerns that I've been listening to, that David expressed, Meg, you've expressed, Robin. Chair, uh, Kramer, I, we understand all these, but one great tool that you have. Is the temporary special use permit that isn't permanent. It has a duration, has a expiration date, whether it's two years, three years, one year. So those hypothetical scenarios of complications, if indeed it comes to volition. In a year or two, that can be revisited by this very board. However, if Nick. And Justin, this evolution that they're communicating to you. Hearing the concerns, addressing those very concerns, if indeed it does work as envisioned. Then simply we're, they will be able to renew that special use. So there is a gap, a, a, a means to kind of control this so that it's not the Wild West, that indeed. They have an obligation. They have, they, there's an additional reason for them to make sure it works and functions properly to address the very concerns you convey because. As easily, I don't want to say it was easy to get a permit. But they could lose it just as easily. So this evolution, they have to, they have to implement, but they have to maintain. And to your satisfaction, uh, Chair, Ms. Jürgen and Mr. Newfield, if it's not. Then that's going to change. It's going to change very quickly. And it's not going to be by their choice, it's going to be by your directives. So I just want to remind that this is a very important tool. That we can all collectively tonight explore.
Board, um, I think board members, we need to talk, I mean, unless Dave, you have questions for him again. On the applicant team, if you don't have questions, and I think the board members need to and we should do it now. So we need to discuss right here, right now, among ourselves, unless we have specific questions for the applicant. We need to discuss what we want to do, how we want to approach this and where we want to go from here and whether we're willing to make. You know, what we want to do, because right now we're sort of just laying it out and challenging or asking, let's.
Do you have a question?
I have some questions about the parking. I, I want to just get the parking very specific. Um, you have thirty-six seats in the rest, in the indoor restaurant, so you. So that requires twelve parking spaces. You have twelve employees, which requires six more parking spaces. You have 18 outdoor seating and you don't have anything allotted for that. Arguably you may need six spaces for that. You're, you're saying you're representing that you have 22 spaces altogether?
Correct. Twenty-two spaces plus an accessible handicap space.
Okay. So that's. Is that also the space in the front for like Uber Eats or somebody?
Not included. Not included in that.
So that's 24. So you, and but you don't have anything. You don't have anything allotted for what may be substantial use of the car service. Um, and up to, up to 72 cars in an hour, which would be 18 cars in 15 minutes. So you have nothing, you have nothing allotted for that. Is that right?
I think we, I, I think we have the, we, we have the parking service area, which we've shown the hash marks on one spot, but which I think. Which I believe there's actually room for three cars in that area.
Correct.
So what, what do you mean room for three cars? Is it going to be bar marked as different spaces?
To be, to be, to be honest, because, uh, uh, Chairwoman brought this up. I, I, I think there's a distinction between parking area and parking spaces. So we, we could either, if, if the board suggested one way or the other, we could either designate them as three individual spots or not.
Well, you still have the balcony over them with the, the brick there so that you can't parallel park? Or can people pull out of that middle spot if they wanted to when there's cars in front?
Our, our initial proposal was to keep the, keep the canopy. If they would make it easier, we are open and flexible to create the best experience for everyone and the site.
And I also just want to make note, I think that the 72 cars per hour is coming from the traffic engineers. I don't know that that's, I don't think that's our number.
It was actually more than the, than the standard number. So it seems like it was your traffic, your traffic consultant up the number than it usually is for a similar restaurant to 72 per peak hour in the week for two different hours. So I read that wrong, but that's what I read. And that was above what the standard was for that type of restaurant.
I don't think I have 72 cars per hour.
So, but if I understand it, you have 22 spaces plus a, um, disabled handicap space plus a spe, plus a space for Uber Eats. Is that right? But you don't have any designated spaces for, um, for this, this business for the car service. I mean, some, you know, except for that, is it one, three? I mean, I'm trying to understand really the totality of the parking spaces you have.
So the parking spaces that we've shown on the site plan are for guests and employees that are dining in. We did not want to show in the table of calculations to take away from the folks that are pulling in to stay and dine in the restaurant. Above and beyond what's in the table, we are providing our service, a car service area, which we had originally proposed for a single space. We're happy to accommodate up to three pending our discussion here tonight. But as I understand, the car service is not part of the calculation for interior dining seats.
Again, those are minimum guidelines. So it's us to decide what is the sufficient spaces. That's our guidelines.
You're describing a very popular, um, business model where there's going to be a lot of potentially in your, like a lot of, um, cars coming in and out very quickly. And some cars will be waiting and some, some cars, some people may get there early. Some people may actually come in, park a car and then on their phone place their order and then wait for to get the text that it's ready. I mean, there could be a lot of volume and, um, it just doesn't seem like you're, you know, the, the spaces that you have necessarily, it doesn't seem like it's going to accommodate the volume that you anticipate.
I mean, we, we, we have other restaurants. I, I would have to, I, I don't, I can't do the parking space off the top of our head, but we believe that this is a sufficient number of parking spaces for our business. We, 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 yeah.
All right, go ahead. Um, so I was just wondering along those lines, I would have assumed, and so apologies if this is wrong, that most of your traffic would be foot traffic from the high school during a lot of these areas.
I was about to bring that up. Thank you very much. Yes, that's, that's, uh, the, 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 the way that, one of the things we think is super important here. The really the, the, in any of our locations anywhere, the only, the only time where there is, you know, as you, as you were describing the people and what they could be doing and coming into the traffic. The only time where we, uh, you know, where we have a tremendous amount of traffic is like, is like for a core hour and a half at lunch. And this, this location is situated that there are, you know, and, and we could go through the demographic information, significantly less business office traffic around this location than any of our other locations. Right? So not really, you know, we have a location in, you know, in, in Ry Ridge along the 287 corridor, right? Where there's 40 or 50,000 office, uh, uh, you know, um, office population within our trade area. So th, th, this is a location that for its core lunch is depending on Ameri, is, is, is depending on Mariner High School. I'll tell yours. Um, and so we do think that that, you know, we have other locations that achieve our volume and our revenue projections with this number of parking spaces. We actually think that there's a little bit of a benefit here because we think we get a lot of people walking up.
Does anybody else have any more questions? Does anybody on the board have? Can I ask a question of Frank?
Absolutely.
Frank, this is a change of use and they're also, they're refiguring the parking lot and some of the buildings on it. And it is a change of use. It's definitely a more intensive change in use. So I, according to the code, I'm holding that they need a site plan to proceed. Are you, uh, would you be indicating that they need to have a site plan reviewed by the planning board?
We're not changing the size of the building, just for clarification.
Right, but you're changing use of the building. And so our code, I believe is when you change the use, and it's definitely changing to a more intensive use. I want to hear from the building inspector if he would be, uh, telling you that you need to go and get your site plan approved by the planning board. Because I see a lot of parking spaces kind of stuffed in there. I see the handicap one, the line seemed to be awfully close to the sidewalk. I, I'm really concerned about the spaces across the back, but this is going into a planning board's, um, purview. I mean, their, their expertise, mine though, is to make sure that there's no negative impacts by, by approving a special permit. And when I see how crowded these spaces are, um, it's important that, that, that kind of study. For me, it's important that that kind of study is done and I believe it's required by the code. So Frank, did you want, did you hear my question? I think you're on mute, Frank. Frank, I can't hear you. Does Amber, do you need to unmute Frank or can you help?
Um, I can't unmute Frank. I can only ask him to unmute.
Okay, okay.
Okay, there I am. Sorry, I lost my screen for a moment. I did, I, I'm sorry, I did not hear the question. What was it?
This is a change in use. As I understand from the, from our, our code, when you have a change of use, especially when it's going to a more intensive use, that this will require a site plan by the approval by the, by the planning board. And I wondered if you will be directing them to submit their site plan to the planning board for approval.
That's, that's what our code says. If, if, if it's a change of use, it would be, have to go to the planning board.
Thank you. Okay, um, board members, any other questions for the applicant?
I, I, I thank everybody for.
I have a comment for the applicant because he's put a lot of time and a lot of effort into this thing. And maybe he's got some, but I, I have a question about the, if they need a parking variance because Meg had mentioned that. But I think that the problem I'm having, and I'm, I'm, I was supposed to close the hearing, but maybe the applicant wants to.
David, I wasn't closing the hearing. I was saying that at this point, we need to discuss as a board, among the board members, what we want to do and where we want to go from here. Because a couple of things can happen. We can say, the board can, can think that there's no way we're going to make an interpretation that would allow this car service. Is one decision which tells the applicant something. We can decide this is fine. It tells, we need to make some decisions to, to right now about what we want to do. Are we going to make an interpretation? Do we think an interpretation is necessary, whether we need something or not? Based on that, I mean, rather than just this continued discussion, we're not closing the hearing. We didn't, what is it the hearing on right now so far was an application for an interpretation that we were discussing first. I'm not sure where we are now. I think we need to discuss as a board where we want to go from there. And then we need to, um, you know, we're not voting now, but we need to figure out what we want at this point. If the board members all decide that, you know, there's no way we can ever accept this as a, restaurant with car service because it just doesn't work for us, then the applicant, then let's tell the applicant because there's no, they're not, they can't come for a special permit based on this. They have to do something else. So I think we need to discuss it now. And with that, when I closing the hearing, we haven't even gotten members of the public yet. So, um.
I'm not.
I think we have to do something. We can't just close a hearing. Um, I, I don't think we should be closing a hearing.
Are there members of the public that want to speak?
I don't know yet. I haven't gotten to that. We've all been asking questions so far of the applicant. Every time I ask, is everybody done? Everybody keeps coming up with more. So I ask again, does anyone have any more questions of the applicant?
I, I do have a question. Robin, another.
Oh, please ask. Sorry. Absolutely. That's what I want. I want everybody to ask their questions now.
So just looking at the bigger picture here, right? We're in the middle of a pandemic. The way restaurants serve the public is forever changed. I'm curious if the applicant, you know, from his position, running a number of chains, like what are the long-term trends that you're seeing in the market? Because as we decide on what kind of the new normal is or what a traditional restaurant model is, I think it would be helpful for us to think about it in the new context.
So, um, thanks. The, um, the, the use of digital technology to, um, make the restaurant experience more, uh, convenient, I think is probably at the top of the pyramid. And I think that goes for any of the types of restaurants that you have defined in your code, right? I, I would use the example that, you know, if you go to pretty much any one of the chain, sit-down restaurants, really traditional table service restaurants, you're likely to find a kiosk on the table that you, you, you order from. You're yet likely not to get a waiter or waitress at your table. Not true of high-end dining still, right? Which doesn't exist right now. So I think the top of the pyramid is, um, is around enhanced use of digital. And, and it is definitely the case that we've seen, obviously if we were running the restaurant today, Meg, right? Like the number of people who would be ordering digital, people are not allowed to sit in restaurants. So that's a little bit of, you know, of a different situation. I think the thing that you should expect to see is, um, restaurant companies trying to get better at using their own technology in order to allow a, a customer to order. And I think what, what, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to give anybody bad ideas, but what you, what you should, what you would really more likely have to worry about in, in, um, is, uh, restaurant chains that are fully dependent on Uber Eats and DoorDash and, and, and some of those other third-party chains. Because if a majority of those orders are coming from those type of, uh, pickups, uh, then you get more, like e, even in our restaurants in New York City where there's no cars involved. When we get, when we get a whole bunch of DoorDash guys in the restaurants, that can be very, that can be very tricky. So, I mean, look, the things that we are, the things that we're talking about doing, you know, I think somebody asked me the question, do we think about trying to go change the, the Mariner code? The code's going to have to deal with these things. I mean, we're the first, but we're not, we're not going to be the last, like, and, and, and again, I don't want to hurt my case because is there precedent coming on some of this stuff? I mean, these issues are going to have to get addressed. I think the best I can hope for at this point is kind of, you know, what, what, what Andrew brought up is like, if we could operate this and try, you know, and try to demonstrate we can do a good job for a couple of years, we would love to be involved in the process in Mariner and helping to, you know, submit for some of these issues to get clarified. But it, I mean, look, you, I, I'm sure I'm talking to everybody on the phone whose habits at restaurants have changed to something, to some degree, right? So the things you're seeing as a consumer and that you're enjoying doing as a consumer are probably going to keep happening. You know, post-pandemic, hopefully we'll have kids back at high school so they can, they can, you know, be across the street.
April 8th, Nick, kids are going back K through 12 in Mariner.
Good for you. Not my kids.
The entity returns.
And, 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 and I want to say, you know, my team has, 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 has asked me not to say this. Look, we, we, um, Meg, I feel very strongly the table service will, that we will be able to legitimately be a restaurant and have table service and fit those criteria.
If you were not allowed to have the car service as you had envisioned it, would you reconsider opening up just as a restaurant inside with people?
If you came to me and said, Nick, you can, we can, we can give you these, this parking area, but you can't use the window. You gotta, you gotta put in a door and you gotta run the food out of door. And now that's, that's closer to Dave's description. I gotta run out of door. I could, I could, I could, I could live with that if I had to. I would live with that and then I would go start petitioning the board, the, 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 uh, the town to change the rule. You know, but I mean, I mean, look, people want to pick up their food, right? You know, people are going to like.
Yes, but it's not for us to change, to change.
No, I, I understand. I understand that, but that's what I'm saying.
Somebody's disagreeing that the model has changed forever. And but we're having, we're waiting on the trustees to tell us.
Absolutely. But I, I think I made a good case that we can fit within the rules. And if you can't give me the window, because that's just, that's too much, then don't give me the window, right? And then, and then yes, I'll go and, and we'll, we'll, we'll try to get the board trustees to change it.
All right. I guess at this point, um, is there anybody from the public who I don't know? I took a look at the participants. It didn't look like there was anybody from the part, public online. But is there anybody from the public who wishes to address this application just in case?
I do not see anyone raising their hand.
Okay, board members, let's, let's talk amongst ourselves as that.
Well, what is, what's before us then?
Right now, so we, they came in with an interpretation, with a request for an interpretation that a window was provided. Now I think what's before us is an interpretation that this, what they're proposing now will meet the definition of restaurant with car service. And if we do not think that, then we have to tell them for them to not, because then that, that's a special permit isn't going to apply. So we're not up to discussing whether it's a special permit, whether or not we think this is in fact, uh, a restaurant with car service. But I, I still think the component of whether or not they can use that window is a separate item. Cause he just.
We agree with that.
Told us that, that he would can, consider doing it even without the use of the window. And we have that before us, the use of the window, whether or not we feel that, that. That that's something separate for us to discuss how we all feel about the window and. What, what they're asking now, I think what they're asking now is for us to interpret that what they are, is are proposing as they've revised their application is a, is not whatever it was they applied for before. Is this thing called a restaurant with car service? That's what they're asking for. But they, but they are also asking whether or not as they do that, can they use a window to do it or not? So I. And I think that's part of this question.
Isn't that the decision that we're being asked to render? And isn't that normally done by closing a hearing after hearing them? And then deciding the decision could say they can come back and do it as X, Y, and Z. I, I'm not, I've never seen this. I mean, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but.
We have often had people come in for two, you know, like we, we have one of the applicants that's here. We had an applicant and we have an applicant right now. They filed an application on, um, to extend the special permit and they also needed an extension of the right to extend. I don't believe we closed the public hearing on request on the right to extend before we considered the special permit. I think we heard it first and then decided, I could be wrong. I don't remember. If anyone on the board remembers specifically what we did, that would be great. I just don't remember that. But it seems to me there's no point in closing the public hearing on this because I'm not sure where that gets us. I mean, what is the? I mean, what is the, what does it get us to close a hearing versus leaving it open and discussing in the interim and raising the concerns we have and.
Did that last time, I thought. I thought we did that the last meeting.
So you're saying that you want to leave it so that the applicant can continue to be a part of our discussion and continue to voice some comments as we're discussing. That doesn't, that doesn't seem like a good reason for keeping.
That's not what I'm saying at all. What I'm saying is we have an interpretation. We had, they came in last time with an interpretation of X, i.e. the window was not a whatever it is. We said, we didn't close the hearing to tell them something. We discussed it among, we discussed it. We all had comments. As a result of our comments, they came back. It seems to me that's what we're doing again. We are discussing whether or not we think they fit within this definition of restaurant with car service. If we do not think they do, then they're going to come back with something else. I'm not sure what benefit is gained. It's just another piece of paper. It's another formality. I don't see what's gained by formally closing a hearing on an interpretation. I don't see the benefit of that. I think this is, and I don't see the need to do that in this context. We often start something, we add, we ask for more comments, we ask for more issues, and that's what I'm saying we need to do now.
But we already have what the option would be if, if they don't, are not successful on the appeal of the window. They've already given us, we've already given lots of space and they've given us an option that they would be amenable to, even with, if they didn't get the right answer on the, on the window.
But we're not up to, but, but Meg, there's a different question before us now. You seem to, you raised, for example, the question of, is this even a restaurant? Should we even be considering it as a restaurant? That's a question we need to decide. That's what I'm saying. We have to decide. Is this, what they are asking for now, an interpretation that this thing they are presenting, right? This, this design that they are presenting is a restaurant with car service. Let me finish, Dave, let me finish.
All right.
Yours seem to be challenging whether or not it's a restaurant. If the rest of the board agrees with you, then we should tell them that because there's no point in then continuing and they have to figure out what they don't. Forget the window. The window isn't the issue. The issue is your chat. You have a question as to whether it's a restaurant. I personally don't have that question. Seems to me that you can sit down, that you can change your design. I mean, I don't know if you remember when Roaster Cafe came in.
Okay, now we're starting to have the discussion. So let's, can we escape it to whether or not we're going to close the discussion or not?
If, if I may briefly, Chair?
Yes.
I, I, I think what the applicant is requesting, the applicant, his attorney can correct me if I'm wrong. But they're looking for guidance on whether or not they should amend their application in a manner that's consistent with what the applicant presented at the meeting tonight. Because what, what was presented tonight was different than what was initially applied for. So I think they're looking for some feedback on whether or not they should continue to go down that road or follow another path.
Mr. Stoudt, I appreciate your clarification based upon the extensive presentation last month. That's exactly what we did on February 11th. I submitted a document which was very diligently prepared by CHOP, reflecting the fact that we are mending the existing application that would also in conjunction include car service. But we felt that we would fit the criteria defined as a restaurant. So yes, it would be extraordinarily helpful to define and definitively advise us whether or not we are a restaurant, because if we're not defined as a restaurant, then it, that is problematic.
We have to change the application again. It seems like we have our end changing, change of your application. So we have the window interpretation and we have a new, a revised request in terms of special permit for a restaurant with car service. And I think that what we're trying to decide, are we supposed to discuss this? And if it doesn't go the way that you would hope as the applicant, it's still open so you can come up with another version of what you're going to do? I understand why we're not closed. I feel we've gotten all the material and all the information. The application has already been revised to this new format. It's time to close the hearing and we proceed as we normally do.
Um, all right. Well, let's do this. How many board members would like to close the hearing as it that way?
I'll move to close.
Stop a minute. Hang on. I think the question then is, how many people want to close the hearing? We'll do it in the second, Dave. I just wanted to finish my sentence. And then you can say you want to close it. And how many people are willing to discuss it first and give them back? Let's vote on it. Meg, what do you want to do? Close or not?
Get away.
Chair?
Robin.
Is there a motion to close? Is there a motion to close?
No.
Okay, I'll move to close. On the grounds, we've heard the application. We've heard the applicant. We're not an advisory board. There are issues here. You can help frame where this applicant can go. We've done that in the past and even waived further application fee if they want to go. But I've never quite seen this. Does, I mean, we're not advisory. This is not a partnership here. This is, we're supposed to consider variances, a special permits or otherwise. The applicant's been here. We gave them some input last time. They've revised everything. They're here. Fine. We've heard them again. I've never known this. I suppose this is certainly a precedent. We would be starting with everybody then.
He made a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, discussion on the motion to close. So my comment is.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Greta.
My question is, if the, if the planning board needs to review the plans, as indicated by Frank, do we, do we, do we proceed and close and make a decision? Or do we wait until the planning board has reviewed the plans? Because they may change things up.
All we're discussing now is whether or not the issue before us is not the special permit. The issue before us is whether, because that's what the first application was an interpretation, not the special permit. They have not submitted a full application for a special permit. They're here on the interpretation.
Okay, all right.
So you are correct that I think if we decide, if we approve, if we accept their interpretation, then I think you're right. It would have to go to the planning board for at least a preliminary discussion of a site plan. So we know when it comes back, what it's going to look like. I think, I'm not sure. We've done it both ways. So we could discuss that. But yes, then at some point it would have to go for site plan approval.
So to be too clear, we're closing the hearing for the application for the interpretation, but we're not closing the hearing for the application for the special permit?
We never opened the hearing for the application on the special permit. We only opened the hearing for the application for the interpretation. So we said.
We just had like a number of hours of discussion, special permit question, even though.
I think we discussed the special permit. We didn't discuss any of the findings. We discussed whether or not this is a restaurant and whether or not the restaurant has the adequate parking for a restaurant. We didn't discuss the special permit and we didn't open the hearing. So to the extent that you thought we were discussing the special permit, we never opened the hearing on the special.
There are two application numbers for this or one? When you.
They did as one, which is commonly done.
Right. So when you open it up, how do you distinguish that?
We said.
It's about.
We said. When we opened it, we said, we are going to discuss the applicant, the variant, the interpretation.
Right. And we, and we went off the mark there. We didn't stay on that. We entertained a lot. We even got, excuse me, we even got a revised application all about how car service could be different, which, and speaking a lot about special permit. We all just spent a lot of time on parking, which is about the special permit. It's not about the window. So we definitely, in my mind, discussed the entire application. I know you're shaking your head no, but in my mind, we discussed the entire application, which had both parts, use interpretation for the window and a special permit. And the, the legal counsel sent in a revised application in terms of what kind of special permit. And I assume that that was okay, or is that not okay? What, what were we just arguing? And what did we disclose? And we didn't close the application in.
We didn't close anything yet. All we had was a motion to close.
There's a motion on the, on the, the motion that's, that we are about to vote on, I would think it's to close the, this.
This application.
No, we did not. I'm sorry, but it doesn't matter what you recall. We did not, we said at the first meeting and Charlie, and we discussed it and he was here. And we discussed the fact that we were opening it to discuss the interpretation. And after we decided on the interpretation, we would then just discuss the special permit. That is what we said when we opened the public.
That's what we did.
But we never came, just after we had a, because if.
We didn't say we would discuss the window and then vote on it before we go to the next. I tried to get the arguments to confine around the interpretation. And then it led into a whole subset of car service and the amount of parking and how you would serve people inside. That has nothing to do with the window. We discussed the, the application in its entirety. I don't see how you can say that the application is bifurcated now, when it only has one application that was submitted with one number. And when we opened it, it was just this one application. We did say, folks ourselves, that we would try to confine the, the discussion. Or I was hoping for the logical sense of like, it made sense to get cut through that first before the other. That didn't really happen. We kind of did that for about 20 minutes and then we drifted into the application in its totality. So I feel that what, what the motion that, that Dave has made is to close the entire application.
May I ask, may I ask a stupid question?
Yeah.
Is, is the applicant still proposing, is still requesting an interpretation in light of the amended request that came in in February? Or is the amended request simply for a special use permit for a restaurant with a, with car service?
Thank you, Mr. Stoudt. I didn't want to interject or interrupt. The submission that was made on February 11th was a result of the lengthy dialogue held on the first two appearances, at which point on, we understood to achieve our goal that we had to satisfy certain requirements. We gave those directives to our client, CHOP, and they came back again with this, with this model, which clearly would satisfy the requirements of, of restaurant. We submitted that on February 11th. And in addition to what we believe defining restaurant, we are all asking, also asking for the car service, which requires a special use permit. So we are asking for the board's approval for a restaurant. And in conjunction to that, the special use permit, which would be the car service.
So then, if I understand what you just said is you are no longer asking for an interpretation and you are asking for a special permit. That's all you're asking for right now. Is that correct?
We are asking for a special use permit to operate a restaurant at this property with car service.
Okay, I have not asked any questions relating to the special permit. I'm not sure we ever got an application for a special. We got an application for a special permit, which was one thing. We do not have an amended application. And if we do, I have not seen it. An amended application that discusses the findings with respect to the special permit. There was no presentation about making the findings with respect to the special permit. So I'm not sure how we can close the hearing on something we.
If I, if I can.
One more thing. Hang on a second, Mr. Stoudt. The other thing I want to say is, just with respect to this, for example, Roaster Cafe came in with two applications, one for the extension of the special permit. And we discussed that before they did it. We have to approve, approve a request for them to file late. We didn't have two application numbers. We had one application number. There was another one like that, that we had before. We also had one application number. We often have one application number. So whether that's correct or not, we do that. So I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Stoudt.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Chair. I, I just want to point out at the conclusion, and it was late. It was a long night. It was a long evening. Back on February 4th, it was a long presentation. It was a long night. But we, what I believe clarified and asked for clarification because there was one, going to be one of two routes. One, I was going to submit a cover letter with an amendment asking that we're no longer just seeing, being deemed as a food establishment. We were being deemed as a restaurant. And in conjunction to that, the car service. And to clarify that, because my concern on that evening was, are we going to have to renotice and recirculate a new application? However, it was my understanding and based upon that, the consensus of the board, that I couldn't submit my cover letter, which I did on February 11th, indicating the fact that we were merely amending the app, current application pending to include operation of a restaurant as defined by Village Code, section 342, 3B85. And in addition to that, obviously, if we are deemed to be a restaurant, we would be seeking the special use permit for car service, 342, 3B12. So that's why now otherwise, and, and I think the board pretty knows, I, I've appeared before, this, this very good board for many years, very diligent when it comes to the need of, of having to recirculate and renoticing. So if I had, if I was asked to do that, we most certainly would have, especially in the interest of justice and times of the essence. But it was my understanding that we could merely do so with a cover letter with the expansive definition as provided by, by CHOP. So I'm, I'm hoping that what, I'm, I'm hoping I'm correct in that sense, because that was where I thought we left off at the conclusion of last, on February 4th.
My, 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 the application that I have was an application for two forms of relief, special permit and interpretation.
Yes, Mr. Newfield, you're absolutely right.
Thank you. Appreciate that. But, um, it's unnecessary. What I'm saying is, the last meeting, I know we addressed the interpretation and talked about the jurisdiction. I raised the question with counsel because there's no ambiguity. But as I understood it, based upon this evening, well, I've listened to more questions about the parking and the operation of the restaurant. I, I don't know that it was bifurcated or what have you. I thought we're closing this application. That's my understanding of. I mean, certainly we, we've heard everything. And if it goes to planning, it always goes to planning after zoning, because planning deals with what we've authorized, not what they might want to have authorized. So I don't know. I mean, the applicant has spoken to, he's provided the parking information. You've discussed it. Meg's asked questions. Everyone's asked questions. And the interpretation, I guess, is, I, I, I thought they backed off and we're going to eliminate the interpretation. But at the beginning of tonight's meeting, the applicant began to speak about it again, which surprised me a little bit because I thought that the whole change of approach was in recognition of that. But fine. So to my knowledge, those are the two matters before the board now.
I think, I have to say that I did not see, there was so much material submitted and the way it's presented, I did not actually see this new cover letter, because there was just so much, there's just, the way it's, it's, the way we have it presented is, and I, I don't think it's on the public application at all. I just looked at the novice agenda and it isn't there. So, you know, it's not, it's not clear what's being, what we have and what we don't. I just see now, this is the first time I've seen that there is actually this new solution, this new presented of an application. But, so you, I do see that it looks like from that new application that I was wrong and that in fact, there is, based on that letter, there is in fact solely an application for a special permit, which is not what I had thought, having not seen that. So if that in fact is what's before us today.
Do we clarify if the, the, Ms. Menchek, could you clarify if the applicant is withdrawing its application for an interpretation? Because if the applicant doesn't know that, you know, I'm.
Yeah, I, I, that's what I'm saying. I don't even know. So I think is that we do need to do that. Where, what is, so just to confirm, based on what Mr. Stoudt just said, and so asking the applicant this, based on what I think Mr. Stoudt just said, and based on that letter that he submitted, you are no longer asking for an interpretation. You are asking for a restaurant as described, a special permit for a restaurant with car service as described today. Is that correct?
Andrew, I believe that is correct. I apologize if I mess this up because I am not attorney and I did not open the meeting correctly, but I believe, Andrew, that, I believe that is correct.
Okay, so then.
And does your, I'm sorry.
So then we have an application before us for solely for a special permit for a restaurant with car service, correct?
That, that is, that is correct, Sharon. And, and, and by, by candor, second, I, I certainly apologize. I was in the inference that you had the cover letter. You did not have that until just recently. So it wasn't, so in, in, I certainly, because my clients are on, you know, they work very diligently. So I would have advised them to make sure to make reference to that cover letter before they start their presentation tonight and.
Sorry.
That, that, no, 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 Nick. Again, it's.
I have a question. I, I'm unclear. So if we're withdrawing the interpretation of the window, does the client plan to open using the window? Because, because what I saw was an option where the window is exactly where the car service is. And there was quite a lot of talk about, you don't think that you're prohibited from using it. But yet you're asking us not to interpret it. So when we go away from here, are you saying you are not going to operate through that window?
No, no, Ms. Jürgen, that, that's a good point. However, in the application that is before you, the use of the car service as painfully and, and very diligently reviewed and discussed by Mr. Marsh explains the concept of the window.
Is there to be a, Mr. Stoudt, is there or is there not to be that window in place under your proposal?
Meg, you said it correctly before. We. We 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 tried to make the best argument for the fact that we could use the 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 window and not violate car service. But if you come back and say, you could do car service, but you can't do the window, we'll do it that way.
And you'll.
And if we have to file paperwork to say that, we'll file paperwork to say.
Is adopted condition.
Still asking us to interpret whether or not to use a window.
No. I think they're asking us to give them a special permit with the window. And if we didn't want the window, we could grant them a special permit with the condition that they take the window out and put a door in.
Thank you.
Or if we did want it, but we were prohibited from it, we would not be able to. It's not a want thing.
Exactly. Sorry, you're right.
They don't seem like we're not God, not the trustees, and we're not the overseer of the laws. I mean, I'm being honest with you. I don't get this about that window.
So, Robin.
As a matter of fact, and I want to say one thing to the board before, in the application that was originally filed with this board, they said, a little lap, the the application of this section would not permit pickup service. They said it. I mean, this is just going on and on. Forgive me, but I I just really have other places to go. This is, this is really, but I don't.
Meg, what?
I have an application to close pending. There's a second on it.
Right. And I feel that I have asked, I looked at the traffic study, looked at the number of spaces, talked about seasonal seat. I don't know what else you were going to talk about if you think that we didn't discuss the findings. We wouldn't be able to come up with our findings in terms of whether or not they, we should approve a special permit. I've asked all the questions that I would need to ask, and I've seen a parking study and and we've discussed the number of spaces. So I don't know what else it is that that you would bring up.
I don't know the answer to the question, but having not at all considered the special permit, because I thought we were still going for an interpretation, I can't answer the question. All I can say is, I didn't know they were going for a special permit. I did not consider the special permit findings. And even though you did ask lots of questions that really do relate to the special permit, that is not, I understood, doesn't matter. Let's vote now so we can come to some, to something can happen. So we're voting now on whether to close the public hearing on the special permit. Meg.
Excuse me, is that because the other one, that wasn't my motion? Is that because the other one is withdrawn, so it's no longer viable?
Correct.
Thank you. Yes, I'll amend.
Meg.
So you're amending, Dave, you're.
On the on the application to close the public hearing on the special permit, which is the only thing before us, even though we didn't actually open a special, a public hearing on the special permit. Meg.
Okay, I'm voting affirmatively for Dave. I don't agree with what you just said, Robin, so I'm not voting affirmatively for that, that that we didn't open something else up, but I'm voting that I would like to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Application in total.
Okay, Dave.
Yes, and I thought my position that the, that's, that's, I I had no idea, having appeared at this, that one wasn't open. But yes, they they've all been covered. I'm I'm all yes.
Greta. Greta? To close the, to to, on on Dave's motion to close the public hearing.
Yes, yes.
Abby?
I'll get one vote.
Yes.
I vote no, but it's carried, so the public hearing is closed. We will discuss it either tonight or at the next meeting. Thank you.
Um, Chair, if I could just get some clarification in terms of expectations on, because obviously, the issue of having to go before planning, we certainly.
We're not ready to go to planning. We haven't approved anything. So we're not ready to go to planning. We have closed the public hearing at the next meeting, maybe tonight, maybe at the next meeting. We will discuss how we think about this application and where we want to go. But it's, I mean, you could go to planning now, because you're changing use anyway. So you're going to need to go to public hearing, whether or not we give it a restaurant, or whether or not we call it something else. You have to go to planning, because it's a change of use to to some kind of food service establishment that requires more parking than a bank. So you will have to go to planning anyway. So regardless of whether or not we approve it as you've submitted, you have to go to planning. So I don't think that's an issue and that.
So we're going to, we're waiting to hear whether or not you're going to vote at some point, whether tonight or the next meeting, whether or not, A, it's a restaurant, and B, whether or not we get the approval for special.
We're not voting, that's what we just discussed. We are not voting on whether it's a restaurant. We've now, the board members have now determined that, based on what you had said, that you have an application for a restaurant with car service. That's, so there's only one application, a restaurant with car service for which you need a special permit. There's two, two special perm, I mean, you know, the special permit for the car service. But that's what you're here for. It's not an interpretation. So we're not going to determine whether you're a restaurant, and then whether you need, whether you get the special permit. We're going to determine as one fell swoop, are you this thing? Are we giving you a special permit that you've applied for? That's it.
With the car service.
With the car, right. This this is the whole thing that you've applied for, restaurant with car service. That's what the application is for. That's what we will make a decision on. Based on the application as now amended.
Thank you to the board for listening to me, and I apologize as a non-attorney I made anything more complicated. But Meg, Rob, and Dave, appreciate the questions, and we look forward to your response. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening. Appreciate it.
Okay, the next application is case 3P 2021, 1139 West Boston Post Road. Is the applicant here?
I'm sorry. Is.
3SP 2021, 1139 West Boston Post.
Thank you, thank you.
Is the applicant here? Yes, I have to step out for a minute, so Meg, would you take over as Chair for the next?
Dave does, because he has the experience as Chair that I don't have.
If you don't. Okay, Dave. I have to step out for a minute, if you.
Well, Meg, you asked Meg.
You did ask me. I suggested that you have more experience, and I have never been the Chair, so I would.
Learn.
You don't get experience except by doing.
You gotta do it, Meg.
Not on the fly like this, and we're going to, I was going to, Dave and I will take notes next time.
Um, just hang on one second. I'll just pull this out. This is, okay. So then this is the application of 1139 West Boston Post Road. And it is.
Hello, Board. How are you guys?
Good evening. Okay, it says 3 special permit 2021. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Why, thank you. Hope you're well. I think we have, we've had this, and forgive me, I just opening my session. This is just, you want to basically just briefly review your application, please? This is the change of use to a delicatessen, correct?
For W, yes.
Okay.
Did you provide us with any new information? I believe that we, and a request to you, I didn't see any materials. Did we get it?
All the, yes, all the materials should be on the, on the plan itself.
They are on Novus and in the drive that I sent around, so I'm gonna.
In the drive? I'm sorry, in the AKR.
In the file share that I send, as well as on the Novus agenda, when it, as well as on Novus.
I'm sorry, I I've looked several times, and I did not find any new material. When was that put in? I'm I'm sure it's there, but I just, I have not had a taste to review it.
Meg's position on that.
All right.
First.
Oh, it was just March 4th, okay. And March, so the.
Could you briefly just run through, if you don't mind, the additional materials and the modifications you may have made?
Yeah, so last time we spoke, there, some of the requests were asked from us to, on the existing, existing plans itself, to indicate which user going to be, which space we're going to be using, and which ones we're not going to be using, and what's the square footage. The second thing is identify how many parking spaces that we have, which is on the plan itself. And the third thing is how many employees we're going to have, and our hours, work hours, and everything should be on the plan itself.
And what are the work?
Somebody share that, because I am going back into files and opening up. I still can't find anything to look at, so.
It's literally on the plan itself.
I'm sorry?
Okay, can we put that?
Sharing it now.
Thank you so much. Okay, there we go. Do we have it? If we can just move it up a little, there we go. Thank you. And what would it, briefly describe the changes, if you would, please?
The changes, uh, the the space that we're going to be using, it's going to be 2,103 square footage they're going to be using in the amount of parking space. So the issue, we had less than parking spaces. Do we have enough parking spaces? Well, based on the calculations and the code, we do, we do more than, have more than enough spaces for for our use.
And how many spaces do you have?
And so we have eight on on the building itself, on the parking lot, private parking lot. And we do have six on on the street. So a total of 15.
You can't count the ones on the street. We can, we can consider that that's okay. But that's not yours to say that they're yours.
Okay, sorry about that.
Nice on the street. Everybody should own a street.
Equinox might have something to say about.
Okay. What is the number of parking spaces that you need?
Um, we need the eight.
How many tables, how many chairs do you have? Tables or chairs do you have?
I believe it's 52, but we don't need 52. 90% of our reuse, all pick up and leave. Maybe like 5% to 10% of employees do stay.
Yeah, I thought you said there were 42 last meeting. I know, I'm looking.
Uh, sorry, it is 42, sorry.
I'm just trying to help you.
It is 42.
You have 42 for customers, and how many staff people?
Uh, six total, but on a, on a daily shift, it's only four at a time.
Or. Four. So it's two spaces for them.
Actually, we do have a private parking for employees at the garage. There's two pages, spaces in there, and in front of the garage is two spaces, those four, and then next to it is two more.
Okay, so I'm sorry, can you help me out in interpreting your site plan? Thank you very, 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 very much for, I'm sorry that I didn't notice it there before.
Yep.
Which area are you taking up? Are you, are you taking the building?
The left-hand side. It's going to be the ones that, 2103.
Are you taking the entire space that Le Gladys formerly used?
Yes, the restaurant.
The entire restaurant space is yours?
Yes, yes.
All the way to the back as well, the entire?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And right now, the rest of the building is empty. Is that correct?
Yes.
So is, do you know if if there's any plans, if anybody, they may not need a special permit, there's no plans for a tenant has not. As far as you know, we don't know who's going to be in the.
No, no, we don't know yet. But our agreements and our contract with the owner, the parking lot is for our restaurant only use.
Okay.
Okay.
Isn't there a Mac inspired there? Am I missing something?
I think they they, they're no longer there.
I'm sorry, who was it?
I could be wrong, but I thought I said I saw for, but I could be wrong.
It's empty, and it's for sale.
Was there, like a tutoring business or a computer business, you know?
Computer.
I don't know, my son went there like last week, so.
Then they're there, I guess. So so how many spaces do they need then? They, you know, I guess they don't need a special permit, so I guess, did you park in the parking place that your son went there, or you dropped him off?
We walked.
Even better.
Good. Now, what about the the tables themselves? Are people resisting? Is there waiter service?
Um, the deli, no, they grab their own food and they and they posted down.
So they self, they'll set, they self-serve it?
Yes.
And what part of the business, how much of the business is not involving food that people are going to consume?
I'm sorry, repeat that again.
You also sell food products and, you know, like not.
Yeah, just candy, soda, that's what it. But we we stick on healthy food, make your own salads, smoothies and juice, and just you took cold cuts and the hot food.
So, but people can come in to buy cold cuts to take them, correct?
Yes.
And how about other items like sodas and other, I mean, are there, are there groceries there as well?
Just sodas and candies and chips, that's what it.
Do you have hot food of some sort, some hot plates?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
So how do you, how do you feel that you are a delicatessen and not a fast casual restaurant? Since you're offering smoothies, salads, individual orders that are some sort of hot food, and you have lots of space for people to sit and eat on on site? Is is.
Based on our, based on our locations that we have, where now we have 37 locations. 90% of our customers are pick, pick up and go. Only a small percentage.
But it's not necessarily like deli food, it's not like cold cuts that they're going to take and and make something at home. It's something they are going to eat immediately.
Most of them pick up.
But it's food that you prepare by individual order.
Yes.
It's just that the majority of it is not going to be eaten on the premises. The majority of it is going to be eaten somewhere else. But basically, you're creating individual orders. People order something, and you fix it for them, and they get an individual order to take out.
Yes, but the the food is whatever we have on the steam table. It's not whatever you want. Whatever you have on the steam table, you fill up and you go. It's more for constructions, construction workers and the town employees.
Okay, so this, I, to me, that sounds lovely. I don't mean to be staying here. Again, it just seems that we we get this weird thing that we don't have definitions that really it's there in our code, so. So to me, my only concern, that sounds great that you have healthy food, is how are we supposed to determine sufficient parking? But I do know that Le Gladys was a completely sit-down restaurant, and your business is taking over the exact amount of sa, the same space. So you're not leaving any for another restaurant or a food concern. You could be occupying the entire space. And we allowed, the last restaurant, we decided, we determined there was sufficient parking. But we, as I recall, we did ask Le Gladys to show us that they had an agreement with Equinox that if they had an overflow, they could use that parking lot. Do you have something similar to show us that you have an agreement with Equinox?
I spoke to the manager. The manager said he has no issues, but she cannot make that call. I have to submit paperwork to to the head, to the headquarters, and I did. I haven't gotten a response yet. But from my understanding, from the calculations, and my architect spoke to me, we have more enough seating, more enough parking for our use.
As the last, when we, it was here last time, when Le Gladys was here, and someone before Le Gladys, I don't remember the name of the restaurant.
I am Burger?
No, that was after Le Gladys, I think.
Oh, you're right, you're right, you're right, you're right, yeah.
Um, so maybe it was Le Gladys, Le Gladys. They actually did, we did have some information from Equinox.
I think that was I am Burger. I think that was I am Burger.
I can't remember, but someone who was another, another user of this space did actually have a specific information. We got specific information from Equinox, which I think we need to do, because if if we need it, and I I don't know the calculations, all I, we didn't, I didn't see zoning calculations for parking.
It's on the plan.
What is this? How many spots do you have again?
Eight total on on private.
Could you bring up the um, the the zoning calculations, please?
Yeah.
Can you, can you enlarge it so we could all see it?
I'm working on that. Thank you.
You know, you have a Zoom option where you can change the ratio that you're looking at, everybody? Can you go to two options at the top, you can actually increase what you're looking?
Oh, I see. Good. Thank you. Oh, great. That was excellent advice. Thank you. All right.
Sorry, how can I, I can't increase the size. How do I, where do I?
Top, on the very top, do you see a black bar that says view options with a little drop-down arrow?
No, I actually do not have that.
So you know where it says you are viewing such and such as screen on the top?
Doesn't say that. Oh, up there is where it is.
Yeah, and then if you do that drop-down, it gives you.
I got it.
Yeah, great piece of information here.
Okay.
Oh, here's the zoning analysis, okay. Where's parking?
One to 50 square feet. What about the seats? Don't you need, you you have seats. If you have seats.
He's saying he's a deli, and I think that's a different calculation than restaurant or even the takeout. The deli, I believe, is closer to retail, so it was more, that's why he's going by square footage.
I see. Is that what, okay.
Because that's. I'm finding like it's a little bit in the gray area. Because that's where I'm finding like it's a little bit in the gray area of whether this is a deli or not, but.
I don't know what a deli is. As we all know, deli is not defined in our code, though.
Right. And when you, when you talk about the steam table.
Go to get sandwiches.
Salad bar, it starts to sound more deli-like to me than there's like a chef in the back creating your order by scratch.
Definitely. No chef.
So it's just, so is it just somebody who's like at most delis, somebody stands behind the counter and makes sandwiches, makes salad, whatever it is? Or is it like, i- is it like, is it, so you have someone who stands behind the counter, you come up, you order your sandwich or salad or whatever it is, he's going to order and you order, plus you have a salad bar that people can come in and get the salad?
Uh, the salad is being, is being made by the employee. You tell them what you want on it.
Okay, so it's all go up to the counter. They make it like a normal deli, but you have a lot of seats. That seems to be the difference, right?
Yes. Yes.
I think if they.
A big space. There, there were a lot of seats already there. There's just a lot of.
I think if you have, if you have tables and the tables are fully occupied, then the calculation of seats based on square footage might not be an appropriate calculation. Because if I go into a restaurant, to a deli and I order a sandwich and go, I'm in the deli for 15 minutes, 20 minutes, depending on the line. If I go into the deli and sit down to eat, then I'm in there for half hour, 40 minutes. I don't know how long. If I'm sitting with some friends, I'll be there 40 minutes. So, um, I think as we're thinking about this, it may be that you have to do some calculations for both because you seem to have this, this, um, quasi-quasi-use, a little bit.
If you don't need all those tables and chairs, I don't think, you may not understand, if we start to see you as not a deli, then we're supposed to figure out the parking by the number of seats. But you say you don't need the seats, so you could just take some of those seats away, couldn't you? You could, you could.
I could take half out. I could take half out, no problem.
You could just stack them somewhere and, and so they're not usable and then we wouldn't have to count them in our calculation. And you could set about the number that you think you need. Think you need. If you, how much would, would make sense in terms of what you have in other operations? Do you think you need to service your customers well?
Because the, right now, we don't even need 42, but we just have them just in case we need them.
What, what's the minimum that you think you actually do need that, that for you to be successful?
Um, to be successful, 16. Most of our locations are about 16.
Okay.
Isn't there an issue though with the definition of delicatessen under 342, uh, three?
Where it says. I just know I go to other delis in the village and I know that they have hot plate servings and they have all sorts of servings.
Okay, well, the delicatessen definition from the code says to retail consumption and retail purchases. And it says, uh, such use shall not include tables and seating for on-premises food consumption.
Right. That, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, so if you're in the deli, I think that's right, Dave.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Can you succeed without any tables or chairs and it just be 100% takeout? Could you?
And, yeah, no problem.
Alternatively, alternatively, could you be, I'm not sure that there's anything that would prevent you from being a composite use delication slash restaurant, but to be a restaurant, you have to have
Yeah.
ta- wait, waiter service, right? Somebody's got to.
But we've also, but that's, we, we haven't had wait service at Chipotle and we don't have wait service at Duck Donuts.
Right, but they're.
So he's under, he's under the umbrella of food service establishment.
I'm just trying to go through this pieces. If he's a restaurant, what is he? He's a food service established, not a restaurant. That's all I'm trying to figure out if he's having.
But he says, he's going to go down to, um, eight seats?
No, he's.
And then it's.
The problem is, as Chair points out, is which is it? 342, 45.
If you take all the tables out, then it's clear. Then you're just a delicatessen and there's no issue. And you only need the parking based on the patron area. Whatever it is, that's all you need, the parking, and you don't need parking for tables. If you're going to have tables, then presumably you're a food service establishment, let's say, of whatever that means. And with respect to parking, whatever it means in general, because the code is so.
Well, 340.
Minimizes the number of seats.
20, it says no more than 20%.
He has like two tables and, you know, or, or if he has eight seats, so he only needs, you know. What did you, I'm sorry, what did you tell us that you would need or?
Um.
16 or?
16, 16, but I'm hoping to go less.
Is, it would be four spaces, plus he needs, um, two for employees, so he would need six spaces. So if he would bring his table down to that, that size, number of tables, he would have enough parking, even if we considered it some sort of food establishment that we're following the minimum guidelines for, for parking.
He just has to be, just to be, try to cut you off. But just to be clear, employees do have a private parking in the garage and in front of the garage.
Additional spaces. So there's plenty of spaces if he just brings it down to the number of those 16 that he talked about. And he stacks everything up so they're not usable, the table, other tables.
I think the different question you're asking is what is he? If he's a delicatessen, he can't have table service. If he's some kind of cross-use of food service establishment, it's not a delicatessen and or not a restaurant, then it's something different. But, but we just spent time with the last application as to what is it? So let's not, um, you know, let's find out what this is. We can't, we're not, you know, we can't tell, you know, what is this?
Okay, I thought that what we had done in terms of, what's Duck Donuts? Like, or what is?
Fast food. We consider them fast food. Uh, they don't have, Duck Donuts is different from Chipotle. Duck Donuts doesn't have sit-down.
Okay, what's, what's Boston Market in the C one? I thought we had to a point where we realized we don't have the right definitions for modern types of establishments. And we are giving the special permit as a food establishment.
I'm not arguing. If that's what we're giving, that's what we're giving. But then he's not a, from our perspective, he's not a delicatessen. That's all. He can't be a delicatessen because the delicatessen specifically says no tables. So it has to be. Right, so it could be something else. What is the something else? He's a food service establishment. Period. And that's what he is with certain number of tables, plus the rest and the, and the operation is continued. And maybe that's what he's applying for. That's fine. Just has to be clear that that's what he's applying for, not a delicatessen. Which is what the application was for. So if he's applying for something else and where he's amending his application to be for a food service establishment, not for a delicatessen. That's all. And that's fine, but let's make sure that's what we, we, we understand if he's okay with that and he's agreed and, you know, he's amending his application to be that. Then it's good. That's fine.
I'd be okay with that. If, uh, if I can get, I think that'd be great. If something does, uh, can be a problem, then we can remove them as well.
Okay, so food services. Then would you be allowed by your landlord to put, I know that we had asked I am Burger to do this. It was a uh, uh, business that had been there before, to actually put a sign on the driveway showing, to say parking available for your, what I, I'm sorry, whatever your name of your business is going to be, that you can have a sign on the driveway there that parking is available. Uh, you know, in the lot.
Oh, yes. Of course, we can have a big.
A lot of times it's difficult to see that there is more parking back there. And so we had asked them to sign there so that they could know that customers know that they could park there.
Definitely.
And so right now, the other business, if it is operating, the, the Mac Inspires, they do not use those parking spaces? Or the parking spaces you're referring to is in addition to whatever they're using?
They would not be using it. Our contract states that we own the whole parking lot.
Okay.
So how many tables? Just to be clear, you're, 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 you're willing to go with how many tables?
16. 16 seating.
16 tables? Yes. 16 seats. I don't mean 16 tables, 16 seats.
Yes.
Four tables?
Yeah.
Well, I divided the 16 by three. And you, 16 divided by three.
The seating, the, the cities that we have are on the window. Each seat is individual.
Oh, you just have 16 seats around the restaurant, not at tables?
On, on the window, by the window, like a bar stool.
Mm-hmm.
You had tables on the other application. You had it in the.
Yeah. Yeah, because I'm going to remove those.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, we're not a deli because we are doing food consumption with some seeds.
Yes. Food service establishment with counter and with, with, with a counter and with takeout and whatever it is. Okay.
Well, I think he needs eight spaces, even as a food establishment, if we're going to use the minimum guidelines for which we seem to have done as a precedent in the past, even though it's for things.
Right. I think that's what we did. Yes. We just kind of.
That would be six for the customers and two for staff and it would be eight. Plus the two spaces, and he's telling us, I'm sorry, I keep forgetting, the two for the employees are actually not part of his count of parking spaces.
Uh, yeah, that's for, for the employees and not counted in these plans.
Okay.
So that would mean seven for the, um, for the deli part and six for the non-delie part, which brings you up to 13 spaces.
I don't understand. What's the non-delie part? Mo- oh, no. If you're a food establishment, you don't have both the square footage and then seats.
Yeah, that doesn't work. That's not going to work for us. That's not going to work.
It's not a deli. It's not a deli, so we don't care about square footage for patrons. We go by the minimum guidelines as we have done for other food establishments, which is we take the number of seats and the number of staff to arrive at a number.
I don't, that works. That does not work for this application. The most of the people are not going to be sitting there. Most of the people are going to be taking out. I don't think that seven spaces is anywhere near enough spaces for the type of operation that you're planning to operate. Yes, you have this high school right near you. So, yeah, people are going to be walking there from the high school. But other than that, I do not think this is very, I mean, we, we have, this is really not, I mean, when we look, if you look at Duck Donut, we did, we took it, I'm not sure base, I don't even remember based on what, but we required a lot of parking spaces for them. I think it had to do with the traffic study as to how many parking spaces we required for them. But they don't have any tables and it's very small. We required a lot more parking spaces than under either of those calculations. Similarly, with Chipotle, we looked at the tables, um, in coming up with the numbers. So we have done variety of things and I do not think, given what you're having, that, I think that, that the seven spaces are enough spaces.
Okay. I'm sorry, again, without, we're not talking about the, the spaces for the staff. How many parking spaces are in the back, on the parking lot, available for customers?
Eight total.
Eight. And he needs six according to the number of seats. So he has two additional for people who are standing in the patron area. Do you feel two additional for the people walking in and out is okay? Or do you feel it should be more?
I do not think that he has anywhere near enough parking spaces, given how this is going to. The fact that he has 16 seats, what he has indicated are not the significant part of his operation. The significant part of his operation is the, you know, take, is the order and takeout. I think we need to consider this, um, as for what it is, we cannot, we, it is not adequate to just say that we're basing it on the seats when most of the operation is not going to be seated.
Okay, did we add more? Okay. We're not using the same reference for different.
Well, we didn't use it. Duck, duck for both, for Duck Donuts, we didn't use either of these. We used the parking analysis in part. We started with the parking analysis, but we didn't base it on square footage and we didn't base it on seats because they have no tables. We based it on something else. If we based it on square footage, they would have needed a lot fewer than we required. I don't remember what the number is, but we required a fair number. And the same thing for Chipotle. And, um, Chipotle, which has a lot, which has table service, we had a lot of, spent a lot of time. Again, I think we have not been 100% consistent because in that shopping center, remember, there was a traffic study based on certain number of seats. And we said that wasn't even enough. And then we did additional calculations. So I think while he's going to have tables and this is going to be some kind of a food service establishment, there's no guide in the code for how many seats. A restaurant has one seat per, uh, for, uh, one seat, one space for every three seats, but he's not a restaurant. He's a food service establishment and there is no standard in the code.
I would like to bring up the fact that because the Mexican restaurant had been there so long and then La Gladys came and I am Burger came. So when La Gladys came, um, I thought we felt, wow, there was like a pretty big concern there with a lot of tables and chairs that had been operating there. How could we deny the parking to the next, when La Gladys came in? We didn't start thinking about how many tables, how much would be takeout. There was this sense of we cannot deny another food establishment going in there. Um, I don't believe that this one is intended to be as any larger than, say, the Mexican restaurant that was, you know, for years there and is intended to be any busier than, um, La Gladys was originally. And we, we did approve those, um, those permits.
Both of those, we did require, we did discuss the fact of, um, the Health Club next door providing additional parking. And both of those were actual sit-down restaurants. This is not a sit-down restaurant. This is a separate, a different kind of operation. And so, um, I don't think, I think we need, I think you need to go and discuss it with, um, the Health Club as to providing you the opportunity for additional spaces.
Obviously, no.
Then I think, then we'd need to give you a variance. Then we'd have to give you a variance for parking.
I did speak to them. I spoke to the manager. Manager said he had no, she had no issues, uh, us parking there, but that's not her call to make. So I submit paperwork to corporate and I haven't gotten any response yet.
What do other members of the board have any questions for the applicant or want to have any thoughts on this? Sorry, Dave, I guess I took back over the.
Yeah, great. I wrote you nothing. Well, thank you. I was trying to go back to Meg with it, but. I think this is a large space. I think it's a great idea. I don't know, I know the restaurant well. It used to be that, it's a couple of places, been about three places since I've lived here. But, I mean, parking's an issue and knowing what his identity is. And I think that the applicant should do some more thinking about this because it's a concern to sometimes when we listen to this and you go from having all these tables to no tables to some tables. I mean, it really, you have to fit into this somehow and at least have your goals in line at beginning. I think it's, uh, it's, it's not a delicatessen and, uh, it's a restaurant. It's a food, food service establishment, whatever. And I agree. I think that they should come back, maybe talk to the parking, talk to them about it. Do, is, do they have an agreement with others, the Health Club?
It did with the old tenants, that, that the old tenant was the owner of the building, but he knew the manager himself. That's how, that's how he got, um, approval, but the old manager doesn't work there anymore. There's a new manager in there.
Well, can you ask them if they can go to corporate, whoever they go to and speak to them about?
They did submit the paperwork to them, but I haven't gotten a response yet.
Oh, you did submit it to them?
I, I did. So we haven't gotten a response.
How long ago did you?
Two weeks ago, maybe 15 days ago.
That's not that long.
Yeah, so may, maybe, uh, maybe, maybe ask them to show, to, to come into the next meeting or something. I don't know. Maybe find out where they go with this thing.
It's not as easy to get corporate attention just regarding, you know, parking space.
And did you say, sorry if I, if I got this, you said you don't need the tables at all, is that right? I mean.
If parking is going to be an issue, we have to move, uh, move all seedings. I have no issue moving all seedings. We just need to open. I'm personally guaranteed for 15 years of lease. Either way, I will have to open. So.
Then I think it sounds to me like at the moment you need to have no tables. If you, um, because it looks like based on the size of the restaurant and the calculations as needed for a delicatessen, you would have enough parking spaces. Then if Equinox does agree to allow you parking, you can come back and amend the application and put in the tables or the seats, whatever it is, and then we'd be fine.
Okay, that's fine. We could do that. We can proceed right now without, so.
Sounds like a good way to start out.
Uh, I've been paying rent for five months and I'm personally guaranteed for the whole 15 years of lease, so I really need to open.
You didn't write in that it was contingent upon getting the special permit approved?
Thinking it was a restaurant before and they had so much seating, I thought you had no issues. I did not know I have to get a personal use, a personal, special use. I wish I did.
Just to be clear though.
If he, if he, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry. I just wanted to ask the question. Um, I believe the concern expressed, uh, from the.
I'm I'm sorry, I just wanted to ask the question. Um I believe the concern expressed uh from the chair was that the the nature of the deli would really be driving the foot traffic uh to the restaurant. Would removing the tables solve the perceived parking problem? Or does that parking problem arise from the the counter traffic at the deli more so than the tables?
No, because the calculations for a restaurant are based on tables. The calculations for a deli are based on really a retail use because a deli, you know, you go in, you come out like a store. Um and therefore, there are two different types of calculations and based on.
Yeah.
So based on what they show in their zoning chart, which was based on it being a deli with no tables, they're fine.
Okay, I thought that the fact that it was a retail use drove that number, parking number higher uh because of the service nature of the business based on the square footage.
It, for whatever reason, it doesn't.
Okay. This is another business that is near the high school, so I'm assuming it's lunchtime and it's actually gonna be a lot of foot traffic.
Yes.
Okay.
Um is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this application?
I do not see anyone who wishes to speak.
Okay, uh any other questions or do you want, now that we know what we have, which is no tables, a deli? Anybody have any more questions or do you want to make, somebody want to close the application?
I have nothing to add.
Anybody on the board have any questions for the applicant? Anybody want to make a motion to close?
I'll make a motion to close.
Um I'll second it. Dave.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Greta.
Yes.
Meg.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. So this application is closed.
Yeah, tell me what's uh what's my next step?
So what happens now is we will either, so we've closed the application. Now, we're either going to discuss it and vote tonight or we'll discuss it and vote at the next meeting. I it's gonna be the board when we're done and we see how this is going.
Okay, I hope I hope tonight.
Thank you. Well, we'll see what we can do.
All right, thank you. Have a good day.
Have a good night.
Okay, those are all the public hearings. The rest of the applications are discussion of closed applications. So um the next, so the discussion, the first one is six S P twenty seventeen, three sixty A Mount Pleasant Avenue and we have a draft uh resolution before us. Does anybody have any comments, questions?
One of the findings, it said that it was in the C two that didn't have any parking requirements. I don't believe that's a right, the correct interpretation of our code. It's that we generally, for businesses in the C two find that there are sufficient parking in the municipal lots, since there are several large municipal lots in the C two zone and there is also metered parking that we have historically not considered parking requirements because we believe that they're being provided for by very large lots. It's not the fact that it doesn't have any parking.
I'm I'm not sure that's.
I do find in the code where it says there's no parking requirements in the.
You did or didn't, Meg?
I I've never found that, no.
I thought we discussed as that um the issue came up and I can't remember. What's Mamaroneck Avenue?
It just came up when we were discussing the movie theater and I actually voted against the.
No, it also came up, but what what district is Ivan's Mini Mark Mart in?
B two.
And that's what we discussed last week, that it didn't need it.
It didn't need it, but I'm I'm finding in the resolution that it said there are no requirements for C two businesses and I believe that's not the correct that that's not what the code states.
Okay. I'm looking up the.
The draft of the resolution has, is it completed or is it say findings to be inserted?
We left that blank to to allow for um incorporation of what's discussed.
Fine, okay. I just wasn't sure if people were reading from it and that's going well.
Didn't want to presume the outcome here.
Okay.
But anyway, I am happy to say if the resolution says that parking, sufficient parking is provided through the municipal lots and metered parking near. Um and then we don't even have to examine whether or not it's correct to say that there are no requirements in the C two. If everybody would agree with me that it's sufficient to say that we find that municipal lots and metered parking provide sufficient parking.
Um.
For me.
Okay, I will read you what the code says. This is in attachment three, note seven. None for existing forced floor space, but as required by Article eight for any new floor space constructed. No parking is required in the C two district unless you build new space.
And when was that passed? Because that building doesn't look all that old that Ivan's in. I don't know. We don't know whether it's new or not. We would have to start to look at whether, when it was built.
Uh we have from Ivan, um this is, hold on. We just, last time we were here, we saw all these, oh, there was all this, there was some discussion about prior uses and how long things had been there and the various certificates that had been issued, but that's what it says. And Ivan's has been there bef- before and we'd have to go back to use and we determined that these uses had been there um for a long time. So I.
I don't think that's what we determined that it was in the C two and that's why we weren't exploring more about the parking. I'm not so certain that we knew that much about what had been used there before.
Charlie, I I recall that Charlie specifically said last time he had looked and said it's in a C two district, no parking spaces are required. And that is what we.
Sandy said that I have a problem with it and if everybody would agree that we could say is the parking is sufficient for lots.
I don't want to make an overall statement that parking is sufficient in a C two district, since the code tells you what's supposed to happen.
For this particular business, it's sufficient. It's a pretty small business and there's, I mean, it's a lot that's within walking distance. Anyway, that was my reason for not looking farther in in terms of, otherwise I would need to know when it was actually built in terms of when it says there's nothing needed for new construction or new floor. I don't know that we've really explored that and that would hold this up.
What does anybody else think about the situation?
Or at least, at the very least, we cite that chapter in code saying this is why we believe it doesn't have minimum requirements, because I don't want to just start setting a precedent. Nothing needs minimum requirements um for anybody in the C two. When it seems that if it's construction, it may.
This issue came up with respect to um Molly Molly Malone's, whatever the, you know, which is probably the wrong name of what it was. And the.
Blank.
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you.
Molly was a good old one.
I knew it was, uh so the issue, I remember the issue came up there because they were going to use the that open deck for restaurant service, which had not been used before. And we had a lot of discussion whether they needed parking because of that use of new area that they weren't, that had never been used before. I honestly don't remember how we resolved it truthfully. But I do remember that was the discussion. The rest, the rest was in the C two district. Nobody needed parking for that. We just had, the only discussion was about whether they needed additional parking for that specific thing. On no other application that has been before the board on Mamaroneck Avenue, have we ever discussed?
Because I was on the board when we discussed the movie theater and I actually voted against that patient due to parking. You might not have agreed with me, but it was part of the discussion and it was part.
Honestly, I don't remember.
I do, I remember it very well because it was my point of view.
Okay, but when all those restaurants have come in, we haven't discussed.
Right, but I thought we're talking about expansion of a footprint or space. And what I'm saying is we're not quite, are we gonna stop and find out whether there's an expansion of footprint or space for this particular building? We're just making the assumption it hasn't changed. But instead of having to delay this, I am fine with it if we say that we have found that there is a municipal lot and and just avoid having to make that determination at this point.
Um all right, what is, okay, other members of the board, what do you think?
It's a delicatessen with hot food.
Robin, what is that? Robin, what's that provision that you cited again? What's the number?
You know, in the back, there are the charts that have uh specific requirements. So attachment three. Attachment three, which is the commercial manufacturing use. Sorry, I closed it. I have to pull it out again. And um if you go to, sorry, if you go to column, so column twelve, column eleven talks about off-street parking. And if you, you know, follow C two general commercial across to off-street parking, column eleven, you see that it says note seven and note seven says none for existing floor space.
I I suspected Charlie might have concluded that there's no requirement because this particular application is not proposing to expand any floor space, but rather utilize existing floor space.
Isn't this prior, this was, they've had the permit, right? They've had a special.
This is a renewal. I just don't want to say, or if we're gonna say that it's because it doesn't require it, I would like to cite according to the code so that people know that it isn't just absolutely no requirement, because there is requirement if you are going to change or expand your floor space. So I don't want to make the statement to stay, there's just no parking requirement in the C two, if you want to cite that.
I'm fine to cite it. I'm fine with citing that section. Pursuant to atta- pursuant to attachment three, note seven, no parking, no parking space is required.
Or that there's no additional parking required because of what they're, I was, don't they have cer- they have a certain vested rights in the sense that they've had a special permit?
Except that to the extent the special permit was erroneously granted, you raise a different question. If we didn't dis- I I'm not trying to, you know, yes, but that's what we were discussing. We had, right.
You know, I think we should maybe just put in there that there's been no negative change and they've complied with the special permit. Right? That they've been no change of circumstances. And leave it at that. I mean, I don't, I think they've got themselves a vested right issue here. I don't know. I mean, it's, they've got.
Yes, I agree with you. I think those are good findings. I just didn't like the statement that there's absolutely no parking requirements in the C two.
I agree with, no, I I I agree with that. I think, Meg, I think that's a good point. Because then you're sort of embellishing it and making it, ta-da. As opposed to, in my my view on this is you've been operating there. We gave you this, you've had a permit, right? And so be it. There's been no, you've complied with the permit. There's been no major change. There's been no changes or negative things. And for reasons of the existence of the permit, fine, there's been no change. I, what you're saying is you don't want to make this a new threshold or a new standard for a benchmark.
I don't want someone else to come across our resolution and says the Z B A raped them because they said there's absolutely no parking requirements.
And I don't want to, and I I have a different problem, uh which is I don't want to just say because we gave them a special permit once, now they're vested forever. So I would be happy with saying something like, something to the effect of whereas this isn't, so this is an existing use and there's been no change to the size or the operation. It's the same use and operation. And whereas pursuant to attachment three, note seven, no parking, no parking is required for the continuation of this use.
Well, see, but then if you say that, Robin, you're effectively saying that this type of a use doesn't require it.
No, I, no, I'm saying for this particular operation, we're not saying the use, it's not a use thing. It's got to do with the because that doesn't speak about use. It talks about new space for this particular operation. We could say by operation, we could say for this particular for this applicant, for this applica- for this application. Pursuant to that, for this application, whether or not there'd been a special permit, I think.
Let me ask it to you this way, if I may. I'm sorry, I interrupted you. Forgive me.
No, go ahead.
Let's assume that a number of years ago, the board was properly inebriated and decided, sure, we'll give it to them. And they missed a couple of important things. A person goes in and operates and they didn't have the right parking, let's say. They didn't have, maybe the window or something, who knows? And lo and behold, they come in for the renewal. I don't think you can, I mean, I haven't researched this lately. I've researched renewals. But I think you can't then say, okay, we made a mistake three years ago. You can't challenge it after thirty days. We're challenging it three years later. I think that if they, I think the key elements to a renewal are that they've been in compliance and they're not changing anything. You can't reopen, I don't think, everything. I understand Megan's, Meg's saying she doesn't want to embellish that, oh, you don't need parking and and you want to protect it. But maybe what you do is you concentrate on saying, okay, there's been no change, you've complied with the special permit, there's been no changes and.
We don't even need to reference.
The use, the prior special permit is extended, period.
Yeah. I might be okay with that, but I do not want to say anything about vested, because I don't.
No, no, I wouldn't say anything. You don't have to.
I don't agree that just because.
They are or they're not, and that's the end of the world. But I'm saying, you want to say they've complied.
That's fine. I'm okay with not saying anything about.
But they're not changing the operation. And that special permit is extended. You're really not even adopting anything. You're just extending.
And then we don't. With that, I'm okay with not saying anything about parking whatsoever.
Because you want to keep yourself open for the next person who comes in. Well, yeah.
Okay, I'm with that.
Castle, is that good? No?
So we will reference the the parking footnote for clarity.
No, we won't reference any. Whereas this is an existing use, where essentially what we're saying is, whereas this is an existing operation where has there have been no changes to the special permit, whereas there have been no complaints or issues raised with respect to the operation of the special permit, we are going to extend it.
We can actually, and they're in compliance with, we can actually go further and say, and they're in compl- they're in compliance with it and therefore that's extended.
Because I'm taking. We're we're taking reference to parking, to any specific reference to out of the resolution.
I think so. I just want to, Meg, I mean, I think you want to, you want to preserve the rights on this. And so later on, if somebody comes up with it, say, listen, oh, all we did was extend what was. We didn't create anything.
That's fine. I'm fine with that.
You're you're essentially at least implicitly adopt, you're implicitly adopting the rationale and reasoning from the initial granting.
Correct.
Well.
Without saying that.
Without saying.
It's extended.
I want to respond to that. I I don't agree with that and I'll tell you why. Because I think they were probably, they may have been wrong. Okay, the board may have been wrong. I'm not going to their findings. I'm saying the existence of the permit. And I know Robin doesn't want to go vested, that's fine. But all I'm doing is you've complied with that permit. Whether it's right or wrong is not the issue. You've complied with it. You're not changing anything. Okay. We're extending the, it's being extended.
I think Dave's right. I don't think we need to to make the new findings because we issued the special permit. We're not issuing a special permit now. All we're doing is extending it, so I don't know that we have to make new findings pursuant to the special permit findings. I think that's probably right. We don't usually do it that way, but I see no reason.
You don't want to create a new benchmark and you don't want to punish these people because they shouldn't be punished.
What about, what about a generic statement that they are in compliance with the relevant sections of the code, three forty two forty?
We want to say that. We haven't made that determination. I don't know that it's necessary. What we'd say is they have an existing special permit. Whereas they have complied with the requirements of the existing special permit, where it has, there are no changes in the operation. Whereas there have been no complaints, because that's always relevant. There've been no complaints or other issues raised. We're extending it.
I mean, I'm with Robin. I think that's perfect. Robin hits it perfectly on that one. I mean.
Meg, did you have something else?
Um maybe that there's no open violations. I don't know.
I don't think any violations on this, were there?
No.
No, so not even open, no violations.
How long do you extend the permit for?
Well, normally we extended, you know.
One usually five years or?
We know, we normally we extend our special permits permanently.
I'm with it.
So.
Yeah, as long as it doesn't change the future things. I'm very comfortable. I like it. Yeah.
Fine, done. Okay, so the resolution will be revised in accordance with our discussion, Charlie, I guess, and Rob, I don't know who's take, who took the specific notes on that, but if you could revise it. So I think we have to, based on a resolution that reads, as I just said, with Meg's addition. Is there a motion to adopt?
Right, my, my addition regarding violation, no violations.
Correct.
I'll move, anybody else wants to, whatever.
There were second?
I second.
Okay, so the, so yeah, the motion is, this is a motion to adopt the special permit, the extension of the special permit pursuant to the resolution we just discussed. Greta?
Yes.
Abby?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Meg?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, done, okay. Approved, that application, that special permit extension was approved. Next application, 2SP 2021, 1035, Nine Acres Lane. This is, was an application for a special permit, we determined last week that they did not need a special permit, that all they needed, and we were going to make an interpretation that no special permit from the board was needed for a swimming pool. So if anybody, there was a draft application, anybody have comments to that draft application?
Yeah, I reviewed what Dave had sent in.
I did not.
I made a comment, if you want, very briefly.
Get to read them, Dave, please, to put them in the record so they have them.
Okay, I mean, the reasoning for this is that, instead of just saying it's the plain language, the real issue in this is, as I recall, I look at my notes, is that no prior practice, there was no prior practice of issuing, I guess, building permits, the prior practice is, was to issue building permits and not require a special permit for residential pools. So I thought that is historically, but also it eliminates the inconsistency or ambiguity in the code. Which it does, because the code now, in the special permit section, says you have to apply with Section 300, which says, the building inspector does it, and then appeals it to you.
Dave, Dave, you had specific language, I don't have that language, could you please?
Oh, I'm sorry, let me read.
Language in, so that Charlie could put, to have it, and it can be in the record, and it can be then put into the resolution, sorry, please do.
The only thing I, I proposed was to modify the second paragraph to read as follows. Board finds that this determination is consistent with, one, the prior practice.
But where is that, Dave?
On the second paragraph, number two, enumerated two.
Oh, under, now therefore be it right resolved, yes.
Yeah, and then underneath that, so I'll, I'll read it, it's just, the board finds that this determination is consistent with, per N1, the prior practice of issuing building permits for residential swimming pools, comma, per N2, the plain reading of the Village Code, per N3, eliminates any inconsistency or ambiguity in the code, and four, ensures that any ambiguity is determined in favor of the applicant and consistent with the prior practice of the board. I think that's what I sent out, I might play with it again, but I don't think so. There is this, oh, I'm sorry, I think that's wrong, I think. Just a moment, I have another copy here. This is the problem with being at home trying to do this.
Yeah, that's why I don't have what you said.
Sorry about that, yeah, I said, it's, whereas historically, I misspoke, historically.
Would the board like me to share my screen? I can pull up.
Do you have the, the right one that I have there? Oh, because I think.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, that would be wonderful, thank you. And I, yeah, I knew there was a section number missing, there we go.
Can everyone see that?
What, didn't, okay, so there's the first.
There, it's whereas historically, the board has historically, applications for building permits for residential swimming pool have been made to the building inspector, whose determination has been subject to the applicant's right to appeal the building inspector's determination to the board pursuant to Village Code section. And that's section 300, it's in the 300 round.
Yep, I'll note that.
You know that, okay, and then the second is, the board has not considered applications for special permits for residential swimming pools in the village, yeah, I guess we, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's fine, the third I was going to put down, it avoids the, it resolves the ambiguity. Because the ambiguity is, on the one hand, it's in the special permit session, sections, they say, oh, and for swimming pools, you have to comply with Section 300.
If you're going to say that, and that's fine, I think it has to go after the next section, which talks, because the ambiguity sort of isn't really discussed until later on, so I think if you're going to say something.
Where is that, Robin? Where, where do you see that, Robin, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, the next section talks about the, right, we have, whereas Village Code 34267, all the different sections, so if you want to talk about the ambiguity, I think it should come after, whereas Chapter 300, then I think we put a, whereas the, you know, whereas.
I don't understand that other paragraph, maybe, maybe that's my problem, you know what, I worked off of two different versions of, oh, I see.
Maybe, maybe the best thing to do, I got it.
Wait a second.
Just suggested, take the language that David just wrote.
Yeah.
Put it at the end of all these section numbers. Because first, we're listing the facts, here is what the code requires, now having, whereas, so here's what the code requires, and now, whereas, da, da, da. I think this should go after the section that says, where is Chapter 300, unless there's another one, that's all I see in front of me. Again, I don't, whereas, yes, after all the whereas, before the public hearing, right in there, yes, I think you should put it in there, and I think that makes the most sense.
What, do we need that paragraph that says, whereas Section 34267 stated that all uses are subject to additional standards? I don't understand the reason for that paragraph that begins there.
Where. Like, the intent behind it was to show and to highlight the ambiguity.
Hi, Charles, how are you? Didn't see you before.
Good.
The highlight the ambiguity, well, I thought the ambiguity is, see, maybe that's, maybe it's me, but I thought the ambiguity was that on one hand, I have a code that says, building inspector will give it to you, and if you're aggrieved by it, you can appeal it to the Board of Appeals. On the other hand, you have a section that can be interpreted, but not as expressly, I don't believe, to say, ah, this should be something that goes to a special permit for the Board of Appeals, which puts the Board of Appeals in a fascinating position, if you can appeal them to themselves. But I, I don't know, if you want to open the door to it, that's fine with me, I don't believe.
I'm, I agree with you, David, I'm not sure that the additional standards and requirements is really the issue, the whole point was, one section says we have to hear it, and one section seems to say, we don't hear it, so.
I agree with you, Robin, that's, and as I'm looking at it, I think so, I think, I think so, I, I just think it opens the door to it, as opposed to.
I think you should take out that section.
Yeah.
The other, I do have another change. Sorry.
Yeah, and then the next section is fine, the whereas on that one, because that refers to 300.
Right.
Which is, which just tells you, okay, it's up in the air, figure it out, folks. Now, is there another paragraph, the board finds that this determination is consistent with, oh, I see, we repeated that. So if you go down a little further on that, please, if you could, ah, so that's where, okay, so the board finds that determination is consistent with the prior practice, okay? The plain reading, and eliminates any inconsistency or ambiguity, and ensures that any ambiguity is resolved, and, yeah, that was, that I think is. Yeah.
I have another, there's an, I do have another change, in the second paragraph, the board is, must consider whether the board has the authority. I think the board has the authority, it's not whether the board has the authority, it's whether the board should consider, but it's not an authority question. I think it's pretty clear we have the authority.
Robin, where is that, please, I'm sorry.
Second paragraph, whereas pursuant to its authority, the board must consider whether the board.
Yeah, I agree with you, I say pursuant to, Robin, I agree with you completely, pursuant to its authority.
Right.
Authority.
I don't think, I think the board has the authority, it's just a question whether it is reasonable, appropriate, should something like that consider special permits?
Why, why is it that, what's, what is that paragraph doing, whereas the authority on the. Was it?
34291 is interpretations, isn't it?
I don't understand the second paragraph, the whereas though, because it's saying, if you read that again, Rob, maybe I may.
No, no, 34291 says, we have the power to make interpretations and construct, construe the provisions, so given that we have the authority.
Yeah, but you're right, but go to the end of that, go to the next one, to consider special permits.
For swimming pools under those sections, that's the question, so 3427 and 34249 are the sections that deal with special permits. 34291A says, we can make this interpretation, so the question is.
Right, I'm, I'm with you on that.
So, so the question is, we're making an interpretation, and the right, and the reason we have the power to make the interpretation is 34291A. So, we have the power to make the interpretation under 34291A.
Okay, good.
The board is considering whether or not we should be issuing special permits under 34267.
That's right, right, I think that's what that belongs there, not the special, because it now reads, has no, has the authority to consider special premises. It's really whether or not the board.
Should.
Okay, whether, the, 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 the board.
Is reasonable, it is appropriate.
Whether the, whether, well, really, whether a special permit, whether swimming pool requires a special permit under 340, 350, whatever it is, or.
That's it.
Whether it goes to the, no, I, I guess, or, or if it applies, we're really doing the other.
Maybe or, I just think, I think all we need, all we're asked, all that we're coming for before us is, does the board have to consider an application for a special, to get a permit for a swimming pool? Special permit.
I'm with it, sure.
So, so if you don't want to say should, whether the board should consider whether the, whether it is reasonable, it is appropriate, it is.
It's appropriate to consider whether you need a special permit, yeah.
Okay. And then the, that's it, that was, that was my only change in this.
Here on the phone?
Who?
No, no, I have, pandemic has had an interesting issue with my life because I have grandchildren who don't go to school. And they've decided that I like to read with them in bedtime, and we zoom a lot, it's funny, it's, I never saw them as much before, but now it's like, I'm just reprieved from being bored silly, you know?
Okay.
We visited Brooklyn the other day, so you know.
Charlie, you have that, right?
Yep, I will incorporate these changes.
Okay, with these changes, does someone want to make a motion to adopt this resolution?
My lucky day, sure.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Okay, Greta, Dave, you want to second it?
I'll second it, there you go.
Okay, Meg?
Yes.
Greta?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Abby?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, this, this resolution is adopted.
I did, um, if you have a space for both Robin and I to sign the resolution, it seemed like it only had the chair's signature, you didn't have the signatures for the secretary.
It turns out that the Village Code does not, I don't know, it's, since I've been on the board, it's always had both signatures, right, for many years, we, right, Dave, you've been on. But it turns out, the law doesn't require both signatures.
Okay, but.
Historically.
And I think we should put the board, because I would appreciate it if we continue the way we have with the.
And that's fine, I'm just, I think that may be why.
Historically, I've always, we've always, I've always seen.
Okay, and you've been on it for a lot longer, way before, so then I think we should continue, that's right, I think that's fine. I think that's fine.
I have other questions, you know, procedural questions are fascinating, I've never understood why you have to second a motion on a board, since you need X number of votes, and I remember once seconding something so it would be heard and denied, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I've done that.
Never quite grasped the idea that you can almost eliminate the person's application by just, oh, well, we'll sit here.
Well, actually, what, if you don't, if you don't, second the motion, it's sort of, it stays there, it doesn't go away, it's just there.
Yeah, it's weird, it's a, it's a really more than a requirement, because I think.
Let's move on so we can get going. Okay, next application is 2SP 202419, Mamaroneck Avenue. This was a renewal of a special permit together with approval of an extension of time to file the application. So, we have to, so we've sort of been voting on both, I guess we did this once before, and I honestly think we voted on both things. First, we voted on the extension, and then we voted on the special permit. Now, we don't have a resolution for this, so we can do, well, wait, hang on, so we can do one of two things. We can do what we normally do, take a sense of the board, and have Charlie draft a resolution, and vote on the resolution next week. Or we can kind of discuss it and quote, vote now, and then have the resolution adopted in accordance with our findings. I personally would rather, I like the new practice of having us discuss it, give counsel some direction, and then voting at the next meeting, but whatever the board, other board members want to do is fine with me.
I just want to point out that I was looking, because I know that they had to clear up violations, and I see they had the electrical certificate. But when I look at the list of violations, I think they still have two violations open. Frank. For the outdoor cafe, and there were two involved with seating on the sidewalk and, and having an outdoor.
I thought we talked to them, I thought they had said that, certainly with the seating, they removed it, and you know, sometimes, what, what I, I know this happens, is that, you know, you, you fix a violation in the sense that you remove it, you clean it up, but you don't actually go through the paperwork to remove it of record. So Frank, do you know if these two violations that Meg just noted are still there? Have they been corrected, even if they haven't been filed? Whatever paperwork has to be filed with the Village.
It's the middle of the wintertime, so we don't know what they're going to plan to do once it gets warmer.
So it's very possible that the violations were a while ago, and they have been cleaned up, but they just weren't closed out. I, I thought, I thought we were just talking about the electrical, I was more.
Yeah, that's what we had been talking about, she's just noting something else that we had.
I thought we had mentioned all of the open violations, I don't feel like, I, I'm not going to vote to approve this, us, something with open violations. So I'm not going to approve the, the special permit without it being cleaned up.
I know that, I, I was, and I honestly don't remember if that's what we said, I know specifically we said the electrical, I thought we were closing the application, but we couldn't vote pending them getting the electrical certification, we may have said also clearing up all violations, I honestly don't remember. I don't know if anyone else besides Meg or me has any thought, remembers what happened? Now, Dave, you couldn't, you weren't here, but Greta or Abby, do you remember?
It was quite some time, we closed it in November.
Right, that's what I'm saying, Dave can't, it won't be David, it'll be Greta or Abby. Okay, well then, I suggest that we do the following, if Greta and Abby don't remember, I, I suggest we do the following. Assuming, and I realize the assumption is just, and I'm only doing the assumption for purely to do something here. Assuming they've cleaned up the application, the violations, assuming they've cleaned up the violations, we would presumably be able to discuss this, whether or not we'd approve a resolution or not. Now, why don't we discuss the tentative, what we'd want, let's discuss it as if they've cleaned up the violations. But why don't we not vote on it unless and until we know if they've cleaned up the violate, until we know that they've cleaned up the violations, if we can do that. Sort of, then we get it out of, kind of, constantly being moved, and I don't want, shouldn't have to come back for this. But we do want to make sure, as Meg says, that in fact, they do clean up the violations, that they don't have them, it has been a problem, they had a lot of violations. And we're going to have to really make it clear in our resolution of, I don't think, when we get to it, that we should give them a, you know, a permanent special permit, I would make it again, a term, because there were so many violations. But leaving that aside, is, is that work for everyone, if we kind of discuss it now, what we'd want to do, and how we'd want to do it, and require them to file the paperwork between now and the next meeting, if they haven't already done so, to clean up those violations? Does that work for everyone? Anyone have thoughts on that? Meg, do you have any thoughts, or?
Well, I just know that I'm not going to vote positively for this application with open violations.
I understand that, but that's, so I'm coming up.
I was saying that we could talk about, it's a renewal of a special permit, I don't know what other, we're going to, you know, find that.
But, but are we going to, look, we have to decide, are we all agreed that they should be renewed, assuming this, and these would be the.
I, I would, I would not, I would also, even after they clear up the violations, I wouldn't give them more than one year, or.
Like I said, I wouldn't renew it for two, we have to figure terms, so you would, you're thinking of one year, what are the other board, let's figure that out now. What do the other board members think, and does that work for everyone if we don't actually, because we're not voting on it now, all we're doing is the sense, so Charlie can draft a resolution that we would not consider unless and until we know they've cleaned up the violations.
We're not voting, I'm not voting tonight.
We're not voting tonight, I'm not.
So we don't even need that written in there, we're voting, we're, we're going to draft something, although it has been cleaned up.
Heck, that's what I said, and then we just would have it not voted on unless and until they, we knew that they cleaned up the violations, correct? That would be the condition, the condition.
They haven't, they haven't cleaned up the violations, and they're still out there, are they just, I mean, what's the remedy for that, is it just going to stay? You know? There's a. What exactly is the remedy for that?
Well, there's two things, there's one thing to actually fix the violation, so you have a violation for a sign that's wrong. And there's a piece of paper in the village office, right, in the building inspector's office, that says, violation issued, okay, so I'm just making a violation up, that's easy, right, so they. So I'm just making a violation up, that's easy, right, so they fix the sign, right, they, I think they, right, you, they fix the sign, whatever the problem with the sign was, they actually fix it. So they have done the work necessary to fix the violation, but they've never gone back to the building inspect department and said, hey, building department, come and inspect and see that we've cured the violation. Okay, so there's two steps to removing a violation, one is actually curing the violation, and the second is removing it of record. So they need to have cured the violation and removed it of record. Right now, we don't know if they've cured the violation or not, we know for sure that they haven't removed it of record. If they've cured the violation and haven't removed it of record, that's really a procedural thing, and can, they could be able to do it with no trouble. They go into the building department, say, building inspector, come and look, building inspector comes and looks, and we're done. Okay, so that's why I'm saying there's two steps to a violation, so we don't know which they've done. Now, the one that had to do with tables, obviously, it, it's almost, you can't do anything now, because it's winter and there haven't been any, so they can go in and the village can go out and look and say, yes, there's no tables there, and they'd remove the violation. So I'm not sure if that one, it's the other one that's more of a, wasn't a table related.
I suppose, but if they, if the village is aware of what they did wrong last time, and he goes in and asks them to cure the procedurally cure the violation, he could be instructed, hey, you know, do you understand, before they cure, do you understand what was wrong? Do you intend to do that again in the spring or not? I do think that the, there, there's got to be a reason why you procedurally close it out.
Because you come, because you, you, the way you procedurally close it out is you essentially think, and Frank, correct me if I'm wrong, you have the building inspector come and say, yes, the violation isn't there anymore. Is that right, Frank?
Yeah, that, that's correct, yes.
Yes, so, um, if the tables, there's no tables there, then the violation isn't there anymore. So with respect to the tables, there's nothing else that you can do to remove the violation, except go and say, building inspector here, no, no, no violation here. It just is what you do, um, there's nothing else you can do, I don't want to start telling the building inspector how to.
Okay, okay, I just don't want to start a practice that we see open violations, and yet we.
But, but Meg, we're not doing anything, we're not voting on it.
At the end, I got it, I got it.
Um, uh, so. Um.
So I would suggest a year.
I'm okay with a year, I don't care, I mean, I don't, I don't mind, but.
Years from when the last one expired, or is it a year from the date that we vote?
Given the way this has gone, I think it has to be a year from when we vote. Um, I think that's really the only fair thing, uh, Dave, Greta or Abby, what, any thoughts on that? Length of time or anything?
I wasn't around for that.
Okay, so you're going to abstain from the vote, you didn't list what, okay, so Greta or Abby, um, any thoughts?
That's okay with me, that's okay.
Fine with me.
Okay, so, um, just by consensus of the board, we would be okay, uh, once the violations are removed of record, we would be okay with extending this special permit for a year from the date that we extended.
And so then we have to agree that we did extended the, because we never, if we never.
Yes, and, and we're all okay with them file, having filed it late, right, I think, you know, I think, yes, everyone's also okay with that? Yes.
How late did they file it?
I don't remember, but I don't remember, it was a couple of months late. It was a few months late, but I don't think it was.
And that was, so that was back in September, it was, it was already expired in September, and they've been.
Yeah, they did, but I think it was, it had to do with the summer and the whole, you know, part of it may have also had, you know, I think that they said was, you know, the whole between the pandemic and rights to have outs- outside seating, and they're, they're outside, and I think they got a little, it got a little, this was not the only one that had a problem with that. So we had two applications that were late filing.
If I just, if, if I just may, um, it'll be important in any resolution that we put together that we know why it was late. I think it's important that we highlight, because it was code for nineteen reasons, because typically, if a special permit um, or any term that matter is not filed before it expired.
It, it isn't that, it may not, it may have been expired before it's expired, we require it to be filed four months before it expired. So I don't know, I don't know that they filed it after it expired, I know that they filed it not four months before.
Gotcha.
Perhaps we should look that up.
Yeah, um, yeah, because Amber, would you check that, please?
Sorry, is that when it expired?
We, we want to find out when the last special permit expired and when they filed to renew.
Okay.
Okay, so I think then Amber, or would you, or Frank, if you could please follow up, Amber, would you follow up with the applicant to make sure that the applicant cleans up the application, the violation?
Violations, even if.
Right, both, both curing them and removing them of record.
And. Did we require an update?
Violations.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
All open violations, whatever open violations.
We require a new report, it's been months now, and this person had a lot of violations stacking up, we don't know if there hasn't been a couple more.
So that would come from the building department or the investigation into the violation, right? Enforcement.
You would follow up, and then if you were Charlie, to the extent you understand what we did here tonight, if you could draft a resolution, and then we'll consider it at the next meeting, assuming that we have of, assuming that Frank can say they've cured all violations, or that Amber gets a report that says they've cured, or they, you know, removed the violations, or open violations.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay. Um, do we want to discuss tonight? The, um, between the Bund Deli and Cafe? Everyone okay with discussing it, do you want to wait?
That was.
I think.
I'm sorry, Greta?
I think it'd be nice to discuss it, um, because it should be done short, and I, I think would be a lot to be up, if you have some resolution on it.
Greta, did you, Meg, did you have something to say about that, I'm sorry?
I was just checking that, that, I was, the bun and the, the bun and the thing, I was just making sure I was thinking of the right application, yes, I would like to discuss that one.
Okay, so then we will now be discussing closed application, uh, sorry, the number is three S P twenty twenty one eleven thirty nine West Boston Post Road. The Between the Bund Deli and Cafe application for a delicatessen without tables. I'm sorry, without seats. Okay, anybody, what is anyone, what is the, uh, I mean, we have two things to discuss, we want, we certainly should, can discuss, do we want to vote on it tonight? Or do we, in which case, we have to make all the findings, or do we want to just discuss it as we normally do? And get a consensus so that Charlie can draft a resolution? I know that it, we should, you know, um, I realize the applicant, you know, is, it would be nice for the applicant to, um, to do, Frank, has he done all the, whatever work he's, well, he still has to do the work?
He hasn't done the work yet.
Okay, okay.
But is he, i- is he precluded from doing the work until we give him the special permit? Or would you allow him to do the work while he's waiting for the special?
I mean, he could get a building permit, he'd be at his own risk if he wanted to do that.
So then I think as long as we discuss it and come to a general consensus, he could get some comfort for that, because I think, unless we had some issues, so let's see where we are. So why don't we discuss it, anyone have thoughts?
Um, I'll think, oh, go ahead. Establishments in the past there that were really fairly robust. And, um, I didn't notice a lot of backup on the street that I'm aware of, or other people complaining about it. Um, I would, if, for voting for this, I would ask, the condition I would request is that there is a sign in the driveway telling customers that there's parking, off-street parking behind the building, and that those parking spaces are labeled as for the use of customers of the space, and that he's going to remove the tables and chairs that he has.
Right. Right, those conditions are now, I agree.
I, I would just add, I, I agree with Meg, I mean, there've been so many, um, different restaurants there, that I would also want there to be some consideration, I guess we didn't really talk too much about this, about the garbage issue in the back, because there's a long history of those restaurants having lots and lots of garbage that they do not attend to.
Uh, then let's put it as a condition, that they need to comply with all code requirements with respect to parking, with respect to garbage, has to be enclosed. The garbage has to be enclosed, uh, has to be enclosed bins and enclosed area. Okay. Anything else anybody wants to add?
Large space.
Be nice to have, so, well, two new healthy, well, I'm about two new, but yes, so, okay, um, if no other than that.
Any change in, in operations, you would need to come back to us, because we, we are quite aware, as, as Dave just pointed out, it's really large, and you could start using it as a catering hall or something, and you should come back. But do you remember when it was, what was the Mexican restaurant, it just goes on.
Yeah, yeah, he was a chef, he, he was a, he was a lovely guy.
Was the, the IM Burger was there for like six months, I mean, that was it, it was not.
The whole franchise went under.
Was that what happened?
I believe, I'm sorry, I, I'm talking out of turn, I don't know absolutely, but I don't think it was this individual space, I think there was a problem with the franchise.
Oh, that would explain, I was very perplexed, it was there one minute, and then it was.
Yeah, I believe, I believe, but hey, everybody who's listening to me at home, I don't know for sure, that was what I heard.
Okay, um, so I think that's it, so we're going to approve, so the, the consensus is we will approve it, um, for three years as the initial term. Yes, it's a three-year term work for everyone?
Yep, as long as we say if you want to change, so if you want.
We'll have all those.
You'd have to come back to us and, and.
Correct, um, and with the conditions we've discussed about the garbage, no tables, um.
That I think at the driveway and signage for, for indicating that those parking spaces are for the use of the customers.
Right, so there are two signs he needs, one in the front saying parking in the rear, and one in the rear saying these parking spaces are reserved for Between the Bund Cafe.
Great.
Okay, I think that's that's it, so we're, we're good on that.
We'll take a straw poll, a, a straw poll, that he could get some comfort that we're all.
Sure, uh, Meg?
Well, I, I, if, in, with those conditions, I would be planning to vote yes on this.
Greta?
Yes, I would too.
Abby?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Me too, okay, so that's fine, so, so if Charlie, if you would adopt or draft a resolution that, uh, follows that those requirements and conditions?
Will do.
Okay, so the next app, the next action, um, oh, Amber, do you know, we forgot to ask Ashley, do you know, the next application is fifteen eight twenty eighteen four sixteen Waverly Avenue, and that's just being adjourned again, but I do have one question with respect to the D E I S. Do you know if they have submitted a revised D E I S complying with the, um, correcting it as Ashley, as A K R F had submitted all the comments?
Um, so I understand that they have one thing to submit to A K R F for review, and I believe it needs to be submitted by next Wednesday. Um, so I, I was in touch with the applicant today, um, and they say that they'll be sending something on Fridays of tomorrow.
Okay, so assuming they get in what they need to get in, and Ashley can confirm that all of her requirements have been met, or of A K R F's requirements have been met, then we will have a public hearing on the D E I S at the next meeting.
Right, what day is the next meeting?
April first, April Fool's Day.
Then I won't, uh, how long in advance do they have, does the public get the D E I S though?
Uh, SEACRO requires that it's fourteen days in advance of the public hearing.
Right, so there's that, what's today's date?
The month, it's, it's, it's.
Day is the fourth.
It's four weeks from today. Which is more than fourteen days.
Is there going to be much other things on that agenda, I was being practical about it.
I, I, we haven't had anybody come and speak on the D E I S, I think we've had only a couple, two people speak on the D E I S up to now, so.
I would like one thing if I could, and I asked for this, but I'm like, I, I don't want to sit there and print that thousand pages, but I would like a full copy of the D I S and appendices, a hard copy that I can.
We originally had gotten it a year ago, right, first or a year and a half ago, we got a hard copy, and then they've only been submitting pieces since then. But we do, we did discuss the fact that they're supposed to prepare, I can't, I, I know Ashley said that they had to submit hard copies, that with respect to the final E I S, we had to get full copies. And she may have also said that they had to give us, oh, I think she said that once the D E I S is complete, they had to submit a complete D E I S, which would be hard copies for everyone, since, for everyone who wants it on the board.
So, yeah, I would like, so we'll get that, like, I mean, I mean, I just, I don't want, I, I'll be honest, I don't want that a week before, five, four days before, it's worthless then. They have fourteen days before it's be complete, I'd like it a couple of weeks before, ten, twelve days, so it could be a lot of reading.
It has to be, it has to be, it has to be complete, um, fourteen days before the meeting, so you'll get it then, if, and if not, then the public hearing is delayed.
And we just kill it, fine.
Hey, hey, um, Robin, I also want to mention, I'm also, I'm away on April first, so I don't know, um.
You have to cancel your plans. Got you.
Okay.
Please note that the submission deadline is, um, next Thursday, the eleventh, so any, you still have an opportunity for anyone to submit application materials, it's not yet been finalized.
Are many applications on for next week, next month?
So that'll be determined after next Thursday.
What, but do you have anything in, and, and do you have anything filed yet for the next meeting, any new applications filed yet for the next meeting?
Yes.
How many?
How many, um, I, I would need to take a look at my files, um, which I don't currently have access to right now. I, I'd say like, two, at least.
Um, okay, the next item, and the agenda is consideration of adopting of the minutes, I haven't read the minutes, I don't know what anyone else has done.
Okay, I thought we just talked about this before.
We did.
As far as I can tell, they're largely a transcript, and I looked briefly and saw lots of errors. So I don't have confidence in it, but to go through all of those words compared to the video would take about three hours for each set of minutes, and I'm not going to do that.
Thank you for that, sir.
Understand, I, I actually think we are not required to approve the minutes. The minutes have to be made, we do not have to approve them, they can stand as transcripts that were not unapproved by the board.
I think what we, Charlie, the answer, what is the, just, what is the answer on minutes?
So, um, the, the tradition is to approve minutes, but I think what we can do is, is, um, kind of bridge the gap here. The minutes don't have to be a transcription of word by word what happened. The minutes only have to reflect the agenda items and the actions taken at that meeting. That can be distilled down to a couple pages. So if the, it's the board's pleasure to kind of get away from the direct transcript, um.
Charlie, we, until last May, we never had transcripts, we had minutes, which were a little bit more than application, what we did, it was a little bit of the discussion, right, just a couple of the high points of the discussion. So we never had these transcripts before, this is all new, this was done. We, what we were told last year was that we didn't need to have minutes, that all you needed to have, that minutes weren't taken, that instead we got these uh, essentially transcripts, so that's what we were told last year, I don't know what the answer is. So the first question is, make it simple, are we required to adopt, adopt minutes?
I, I, I don't know the exact answer to that, and I don't know if there is an exact answer to that. Um, it is common practice for every single board that we represent to review the minutes and adopt them.
Okay, so these are transcripts, they're not minutes, we're not adopting transcripts, let's make it, right, everyone agrees with me?
That is very reasonable.
We're not adopting transcripts, to the extent someone wants to prepare for us, i.e. Amber, this is someone or someone in the village, you have to talk to Jerry and or Dan and or, uh, Barbara, um, to the extent that someone wants to prepare what are minutes, i.e., uh, application one, two, three, uh, was, you know, at the meeting on May, whatever it was, application one, there was a public hearing on application one, application two, application three, uh, application one was closed, application two was. Uh, application one was closed, application two was adjourned, application three was closed. The board voted on the, made the following votes, to the extent that somebody wants to write up something like that, we will consider it and vote on it. Otherwise, we're not gonna vote on anything. Does that sum up what we, what, what the board feels? You want to make sure everyone agrees with what I just said?
Well, why don't we find out, what's the requirement, I mean, I guess, I don't.
Right, so I, but those aren't minutes, they're, they're transcripts, so I think, but I think.
Minutes should not be transcripts.
Right.
It was typed by someone?
Yeah, that she listened to what it said and wrote it up, typed it up.
Barbara tapes the minutes. Barbara is currently typing the minutes.
But they're not minutes, she's typing up what she hears more or less at the, at the.
I, I actually noticed a couple of things, it was like the exact opposite of what I said, like, it's dangerous to start, and then I'm not gonna go through piece by piece.
Um, so Charlie, I think the first question we have is, can you please check legal research, check whether or not there's any legal requirement that a board has to adopt minutes?
Yeah, we can look into that.
Okay, then assuming either way, whether or not we do or don't have to adopt minutes, we're not adopting these because these are transcripts. And that if, I guess if you determine that the board has to adopt minutes, then we will have to tell the village, uh, the village manager that he's gotta have someone who can actually prepare minutes. And if we don't have to adopt minutes, then we're just gonna leave it. And these are unreviewed, unedited, typed up transcripts, which shouldn't even be circulated. I don't think they should be circulated as anything, cause they're nothing. I don't think they should.
Script necessary because we're on Zoom, was that some aspect of it? Why do we have these?
That's again what we were told last year, we were told last year that as part of Governor Cuomo's, um, order, executive orders, allowing for these Zoom meetings, there had to be a, uh, recorded, there had to be recorded and a transcript of some kind. That's what we were told last year, I don't remember, um, I don't know. So if you would just check, Charlie, both A, now, whether, whether in fact one of the executive orders did require that, and two, just as a general rule, whether or not we have to have adopt minutes.
Right, because sometimes they're continuing to personally trans, you know, transcribe this and they don't need to, we should.
Stop it. So, okay, does anybody else have anything they want to, anything to discuss tonight? I think. I think that the, one, one thing that's become clear and keeps becoming clear is the, um, inadequacy of the village code requirements with respect to, well, you know, it's legion what it's. Yeah, it's legion, but, but, but I would say one of the biggest issues that we have, you know, that has come back more on multiple occasions is the whole inconsistency in all of the eating.
Food service, does food service?
Right, and all of, all of the different definitions, all of the multiple and inconsistent definitions and, um.
Lack of parking, that makes sense.
Lack of clarity about what there's, what they are, how they differ from one another, the fact that there's no recognition of modern usage and modern operation. So, um, maybe Amber, if you could draft up of, rather than find out all the specific, if we could write a general letter to the board, Amber, if you could draft something up for us, that was a very general letter about lack of adequacy and inconsistency and the fact that this is very, very problematic, you know, very short, rather, I mean, I think part of the problem, we've talked about this before, we've gone through detail. And I think we need to have detail, I think we just need to, and maybe then, and you know, and just have it very general about how it's so inadequate. We've had numerous applications that do not fit neatly with any of the definitions. And existing operations of, existing restaurants.
I think we should also just point out the urgency of the situation because of COVID. You basically have every restaurant using, you know, using car services, right? Or, or pulling it up right now, so I think it's urgent, you know, we've been talking about this for years, but it's, it's urgent.
Also clarity of what is a permitted use in the different zones. There's actually some ambiguity about.
Right, right. In other words, whether it's a restaurant you can have everywhere or a fast food you could have everywhere or this, what you can, whatever this is, cause the code.
Yeah, if they're gonna continue to have these bifur, you know, these specific definitions, we need to know how are we guided in terms of parking? And we also, and so the applicant has an idea too, and we also need to know where it's a permitted use.
Okay, um, so what me.
Why don't you, if you can draft something up and then we'll circulate.
Why don't you do all the action minutes from back in May, Amber, you can write this.
Um, let me follow up with an email confirming what we just detailed here, um, to start, before I draft any letters. Um, I, I do wanna note, um, that, uh, Ashley and, um, uh, Teresa's the planning board, um, uh, council, it, are, are working on, um, a detailed like list of, um, potential zoning, um, or code, you know, inconsistencies that may need changing. Um, is this something that, and, and I believe there, there was a recent request from Harvard Postal as well, um, specifically regarding, you know, certain things that they think is, you know, uh, burdensome to applicants for their review. Um, is this something that we could?
No.
Together.
Right, we got bogged down before, so we got down to details. If we could just say the general intent of, of what we would like to have accomplished. And then if there is council that is starting to draft a list, you could bring it to us for our comments and we could add to it or, you know, as we've reviewed, other things that are being brought to the trustees or the trustees are reviewing. But we got bogged down and we never succeeded in getting something out the door because it's all this work of getting the details.
I, I, at this point, what we're saying is no, we don't want to get bogged down on the details. We want to give a general letter saying the board needs to clean up the zoning code with respect to all kinds of food service establishments, in particular, to clarify the definitions, to, um, make clear which specific uses, if there are different uses are permitted in each district and with respect to each use, what parking is required, and if there are any other requirements that are.
Is the minimum parking required.
What, what those are. And that's just a general, we don't want to say, well, it says this and this is, we don't want to do that. And so for this purpose, we do not want to join with the general, because when it comes here, we're gonna have our own, we have a lot, we've got, we've tried to do this before and we get bogged down on specific language and specific words and we don't want to do that. We really need them, the board to act, as Abby said, ASAP, quickly. And with regard to the fact that, you know, businesses want to open and this is a big problem.
Okay.
Okay, does anybody else have anything, otherwise I think we can adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Second. So I'll second it, um, okay, Meg?
Yes.
Dave?
Sure.
Abby?
Yep.
Greta?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, we are adjourned, thank you everyone, have a good evening.
All right, thank you, Amber, thank you, Charlie, thanks, bye.
Goodbye.